Councilmember O'Neal?
Here.
Councilmember Tu Ho Nguyen?
Here.
Councilmember Buie?
Yeah.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen?
Here.
Mayor Jones?
Here.
And Mayor Pro Tem Klopfenstein is absent this evening.
I just want to note that I heard from Mayor Pro Tem Stephanie Klopfenstein, she is not feeling well at all, and she was trying to pull herself together to be able to make it tonight, but she just couldn't, and she feels very bad that she is missing a meeting and can't be here, but we just wanted to acknowledge that she would be here if she possibly could, but she's just that bad of shape, so he said stay home and don't get the rest of us sick. Can I ask Maria Stipe to lead us in invocation, and then Councilmember Fat Buie to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Dear Heavenly Father, as we gather here this evening to deliberate and act on the important issues before us, we ask that you would provide us with the guidance and wisdom necessary to make the very best decisions for our community. Amen.
Please fast forward the flag and put your hand or your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice called.
Alrighty, we start with presentations, and we do have a couple tonight, so the first item 1A is a Community Spotlight in recognition of FUS79, a Garden Grove restaurant for receiving the 2019 America's Classics Award by the James Beard Foundation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Garden Grove City Council would like to recognize FUS79 Restaurant on Hazard Avenue for winning the prestigious 2019 America's Classic Award by the James Beard Foundation. And I believe Gary Colte is here this evening. Is Gary here? Is that Terry? Is that Madam Clerk? Is that related to this item? No, okay. I'm sorry. Okay, I apologize for that, sorry. With the founder of FUS79, Lou Tran, and the owners John Nguyen, Lan Tran, Mai Tran, and Tan Buie, please come forward. Just turn around and then we'll continue on here. The James Beard Foundation's mission is to celebrate, nurture, and honor chefs and other leaders making America's food culture more delicious, diverse, and sustainable for everyone. On January 28, 2019, the James Beard Foundation announced FUS79 as one of only five restaurants in the nation to win the America's Classics Award for their timeless appeal and quality of food that reflect the character of their community. FUS79, a family-run restaurant opened in 1982, is one of the pioneers of Vietnamese cuisine in Orange County. The restaurant helped pave the way for Little Saigon and introduced Americans to bowls of rice noodles and beef broth. FUS79 was founded by Lou Tran, and the next generation of the family currently operates the restaurant. They are best known for their oxtail, using their family recipe for the beef broth and cooking it for over 12 hours. At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present FUS79 with a certificate of recognition for their accomplishments and for winning the 2019 America's Classics Award. Congratulations.
Hello, everybody. My name is John Nguyen, and behalf of the family, I would like to say thanks to the mayor, Mayor Steven Joel, and all council members. And I would like to say something. I want to say thanks to all the Garden Grove residents who first supported during the first, since almost 40 years ago, and let us have the opportunity to grow to now. And also many friends from all over America who visited us. It was a fine accomplishment and high opinion that now we have the James Beard Award. Thank you, Garden Grove. Thank you, America. You make my day.
For being here, and congratulations. Okay, that takes us on to item 1B, which is a Community Spotlight recognizing employees celebrating 25 years plus of service with the city of Garden Grove.
Okay, next, this evening, the Garden Grove City Council pays tribute to a distinguished group of individuals celebrating milestones with the city of Garden Grove, having dutifully served the community for 25 and 30 years. Honories unable to be here tonight are 25-year employees Anne Keller Plum, Brent Kahler, Douglas Plouard, Gary Coulter, and Brent Hayes; 30-year employee John Zavala, Les Root and Child, and Robert Bermudez; and 35-year employees Rick DeVal, Todd Reed, and 40-year employee Timothy Wallingsford. At this time, I'd like to call forward the honories present and give brief introductions. So when I call your name, please come forward and just kind of stay up in the front, and at the end, we'll take a group photo with everybody. So we'll start with our 25-year employees who are our honories. And Greg Blodgett, we'll kick off with you, if you could please come forward. Greg began his career with the city as an administrative analyst in 1993. He has since held a number of positions, including Economic Development Specialist, Senior Economic Development Specialist, and Project Planner. In 2016, Greg moved up to Senior Project Planner and is currently overseeing the Office of Economic Development. His recent efforts in bringing new development projects to Garden Grove include the Great Wolf Lodge, Southern California, Brokhurst Place, and the implementation of key hotel developments all along the Grove District Anaheim Resort. Well done. Next, we have Danny Nguyen, if you could join Greg up here. Danny started his career with the city in the Housing Authority Division as a housing specialist in 1993. He was promoted to Senior Housing Specialist in 1999, and to Housing Supervisor in 2003. In 2010, Danny promoted to Division Manager. Danny is known for his expert knowledge about the city's Section 8 rental assistance program. Congratulations, Danny. Ed Leyva?
In 1993, Ed started his career with the Garden Grove Police Department as a police cadet. After completing the police academy, he was hired as a sworn police officer in 1994. Ed worked his way up to Master Officer in 1999, Police Sergeant in 2007, and Police Lieutenant in 2014. As a Police Lieutenant, he supervised the Special Investigations Unit, the Neighborhood Traffic Unit, the Gang Suppression Unit, and the Special Weapons and Tactics Team. In 2016, Ed was promoted to Police Captain overseeing the Special Investigations Unit, the Communications Division, and the Records Division. Ed was recently reassigned to the Administrative Services Bureau overseeing budget, internal affairs, and training. Congratulations.
Next, we have Stephen Eslo. Stephen, if you could come forward. Stephen began his career with the Garden Grove Police Department as a part-time police service aide in 1993, and became a police cadet soon after. In 1998, he became a full-time community services, community service officer, and in 2004, he became a sworn police officer. In 2016, Stephen was selected and assigned to the Career Criminal Apprehension Team and is currently assigned to patrol. Congratulations, Stephen. Jennifer Dix? Jennifer? No, Jennifer. Okay, well, I'll just tell you that Jennifer started her career with the Garden Grove Police Department as a public safety dispatcher in 1993. She became a communications shift supervisor in 2002, and in 2005, she was selected to be tactical dispatcher for the Special Weapons and Tactical Team. So we'll move on to Rebecca Meeks. Is Rebecca here? In 1993, Rebecca started her career with the Garden Grove Police Department as a public safety dispatcher. In 2002, she was promoted to communications shift supervisor and to Police Communications Manager in 2007. In 2016, Rebecca received the Civilian of the Fourth Quarter Award and the Commitment to Service Award. Congratulations, Rebecca. Next, we have our 30-year honories. And actually, we have one honorary with 30 years. Daniel Edwards, if Daniel could please come forward. Daniel was hired in 1988 as a part-time reserve police officer after graduating from the Orange County Sheriff's Level 1 Reserve Academy. He proposed the formation of a reserve bicycle detail, and he led a team of six reserve police officers. In Daniel's 30-year career, he was recognized with the department's Officer of the Year Award in 1992, 1997, and 2004. He was also recognized with the department's Meritorious Service Award in 2000, the Distinguished Service Award in 2004, and the Life Saving Medal in 2018. Well done, Daniel. At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present each of these distinguished individuals with a memento and certificate of recognition for their wonderful years of dedicated service to the city of Garden Grove. Okay, I now know why I have this note here. Gary Coulter is here, and he is 25-year-plus employee. Gary, if you could just come forward. Congratulations. I think Chief is going to give us a little bit of background about what you do and you've done over the years.
So Officer Coulter's been with our department for 25 years. Started as a police officer, did a tour in our Career Criminal Apprehension Team, and has recently been selected for our special resource team in dealing with the homeless issues that we're having out there. So Gary's also recently been promoted to the rank of corporal, and we're very pleased to have Gary part of our organization.
Are we doing a photograph?
Yeah.
Photo?
I'll go back to it.
Photo?
Come on.
Wait, I don't have one I love. Share with me.
Come over here.
Oh.
One more.
Give it?
Oh, okay.
As a final note, I wanted to mention that Assemblymember Tyler Deep has also provided certificates of recognition for each of our employees that are celebrating their milestones, so we'll be distributing those certificates of recognition separately to all of the employees.
Alrighty, that takes us on to oral communications. I do have a number of cards, and I want to preface that, I don't know if this is clear, but if you're here to speak on a specific agenda item that may be listed, let me know when I call your name, because at first, we're just doing oral communications, which would be to address the council on any matter that's not listed on the agenda tonight, so just any generic items. So I do have a lot of just generically publicly listed comments that I'm not sure if they're for oral, or if they should be addressed to a specific agenda item. So we'll start with none other than the infamous Will Be King.
I'm back. I'm back without my van. I want my van back. It got taken away from me October 29th at the Hair Park. I was parked there. The van that's in the parking lot right now, that's the several that goes, that's the one that was parked there. That was my storage van. That's the one that had all the cockroaches that still were in there, 10,000 of them every night on top of me. I'm stuck with that van. The good van was the 2002 Dodge Chrysler Town and Country. That's the one you guys took at 5:55 in the morning. Officer Brian Luther Hattfield put on handcuffs on me. This was my chosen Chief of Staff, Secret Service Director when I became White House President, attended, running for president against Trump, and he was my chosen, most honorable cop I knew, goes to my church. And I come to find out he was going to my church to take security notes on me, national threat assessment security notes on me. That's why he was going to my church down in Fountain Valley. And I confronted him about that that morning, when he wrote me a ticket on my van. He took this van, he was going to take this van. At 5:55 in the morning, when I pulled in, I had to pick up one of my employees real quick. I was going to go buy some cars with me at the auction. And I, 150 yards away, walked up, he didn't see my van, and he was writing a ticket on it. He wrote a ticket on it. And then he said that I fabricated the DMV paperwork. And I go, I don't know signatures, I don't do DMV stuff. And I pulled up my paperwork out of the dash from DMV. I told him, look, it's all registered, you know, I'm just getting my life together. I got two, you know, three, two vans. And the other one was at GW Towing, which just gave me a huge bill for one year, as they alluded to my van. That van's gone. House of God, the van with the two castles on it, and the soldier on the chair on the roof, and it was gone. And that was sad. I lost that until Christmas time. I've had diabetes, hyperglycemia. I've been homeless for 30-plus years now, and you guys took my house, my car, my properties, all my clothes, my wallet, my cash, everything was in there. I got a release for property on Christmas Eve. I'm down here, just got to the hospital. I'm over here at the police department. On Christmas Eve, trying to get my property, they gave me a release for my property out of my van. That was a red van with a toll on the roof that said Garbage Grove PD on it. That's the one they impounded. And they not only impounded it, but they dragged it in reverse from the rear end up onto the flatbed. And Brian, which was my good buddy, now Luther for Hattfield, sat there and told the guy while I'm in the back of the cop car, handcuffed for two and a half hours. I don't really all see it, but look at it. I got nerve damage, and I got wrist damage. I got scarred right here on my wrist for life. The handcuffs were on for two and a half hours. They didn't last the handcuffs. Partner Mears and Luther for Hattfield took me to the Garden Grove Hospital, and I was in diabetic problem, what have you. I went to the hospital, went to jail. About two days, got out. I did community service for all these stupid penalty tickets that I had, and the anchor vital tickets of that, and ultimately, the judge rounded them all up. He goes, I'm going to cut you loose, this, that, just say yes. I'm screwed now. I mean, I'm paying 400% markup, you know, insurance, paying 245 bucks a month for liability only, 30 days. I'm just starting to see light in the tunnel. This van's wanting to come together again, but it's just, I've been six months buried. I've been buried alive. You guys took my livelihood, you took my van. The van made me money, a couple bucks. It was my good van. I mean, it was 2002 Town and Country, had all my assets in it, all my best property, all my best clothes, had my iPhone, $1,250 iPhone. I had another phone in there, had my cash in there, all my credit cards. I mean, I've been trying for the last six months to get back on my feet, and I've been in the hospital. This diabetics thing, hyperglycemia, I mean, it's real. I wake up with blood sugar 500 every day. You go in a diabetic coma at 500, I wake up at 500 blood sugar every day, okay? My doctors, I've been going through a lot of doctors, and now they want to put me on, I guess they want to put me on all kinds of stuff, but they want to put me on whatever, insulin and stuff, whatever, you know, but that's sad to point. The point is, I had one foot in the grave, one foot in the hospital, a couple hundred a week, and what was left to me is finally keep my van. When I got access to my property on Christmas Eve, I was at the police station, and they're like, nobody out, you know, Christmas Eve, and I'm finally able to legally get my property back. I couldn't make access to the towing company. I couldn't make access to the towing company. Garden Grove Greater California Towing on Fifth Street, whatever. They had an auction date for December 27th. I went to the court December 27th, and I left all my stuff in my van at Mental Health, MHA Droppin Center. So I had to redraft paperwork and everything, and the chief presiding judge held in chambers. He made a bunch of phone calls, chambers is down there all day. Came back, brought me a motion, minimum order, what have you. A day late, dollar short, you snooze, you lose. Go pound sand, have a good day, you know? So I mean, I got wiped out. My pink slip has now been mailed to Donald Trump, so I'm hoping he can maybe get my damn van back, because, you know, it got robbed from me. And what happened was, the van, the law is you guys are supposed to mail the address to the last presiding registered owner. That would have been when it went to SOS down at 1550 Spur Avenue, Cozumbeza. Well, no, it went to your police department, 1111 down Arcadia, Barkway, whatever. And that's why when I called the towing company, the third time, they finally made the change. They mailed the lien sale notice where I can contest it to SOS, and SOS got another bunch of volunteers elderly that they misplaced it. So then when I got the envelope, the envelope was pre-stamped, DMV, lien sale department. I mailed to them, well, no forwarding address, got sent back to me. So needless to say, the van's gone, two vans gone for last year, December 27th. I'm out 25 grand, everything I own, gone. And I just, I want to get my van back, okay? I mean, I got tortured, I got scarred for life, you know, I want my van back. It was taken unlawfully, and I made the point with internal affairs.
Time is up.
Okay.
Yeah, time's up. We got a lot of cards in it.
Donald Trump and USA attorneys and others will be getting my van back for me, I promise.
And Valerie, are you here on oral communications or on any specific item?
I'm here on the seat.
Okay, let me, what item? Okay, let me put you for later then when we do that. I'm all up. Come on up then. Yeah, that's fine.
Good evening, everybody. I am Valerie Spencer. I'm a behavioral health therapist at APAIT, which stands for Asian Pacific AIDS Intervention Team. Clearly, I am not Asian, but I love working there, I love providing services there. And I'm here to speak on behalf, in favor, of waving the LGBT pride flag during Pride Month. At APAIT, we provide a number of services to include housing assistance, rental assistance, food, and behavioral health therapy to LGBT persons, as well as persons who are greatly impacted by HIV disease to some regard. And there, as a therapist, I'm able to interact with clients who face a number of behavioral health issues, to include addiction, depression, lots of anxiety, PTSD, bipolar disorder, and all stemming from the fact that they feel marginalized, oppressed, disenfranchised, and not counted by society as a whole. Waving a flag is symbolic. It is not just a gesture of color. It symbolizes to the citizenry that we have respect and regard and acknowledge those people who the flag represents, and in this case, it's LGBT people. Garden Grove is not an anonymous city in Southern California. Garden Grove is a city with people, who are represented here today. Garden Grove is a city that has far reach and far impact. It is a city that is able to make a statement like any other great metropolitan area of our country. Therefore, I am beseeching the city council and those in charge to indeed wave that flag during LGBT Pride Month, to symbolize to the citizenry of Garden Grove that LGBT members are indeed important, they matter, they count, they are seen, and they are acknowledged. This is not a statement about homosexuality, far from it. This is a statement about the people, the people who that flag represents. And more importantly, it's a statement to people who would oppress LGBT people, who would beat them and deny them of their rights, that this is not stood for here in Garden Grove, that in fact, we acknowledge our LGBT citizens, we affirm them, we celebrate them, and we value all of the gifts and talents and treasures that they bring to the city. And I thank you.
You want to go? Okay. Okay, okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of Congress, members of this office, I think Congress, it's been a busy morning. Juan Gonzalez, SoCal Gas Public Affairs, I wanted to take an opportunity to introduce myself to all of you. I think you're working very closely with my counterpart, Ms. Leneo Shields. As you are all aware, from her last probably visit here at City Hall, she had her baby, so she's spending some time being a mommy with the new baby. Happy to inform to all of you that my mommy and baby are doing well, and Lene will continue to be out of maternity leave for a couple of months. So in the meantime, anything to do with SoCal Gas, I will be your point of contact. So again, I want to take this opportunity to introduce myself to all of you. Additionally, I wanted to kind of share some information regarding some exciting activity. SoCal Gas is working with this community, the city of Garden Grove, and we've been able to, want to share that item before you. I've brought with me one of our representatives, Ms. Daisy Cristobal Sanchez. And in a moment, if you would allow me to introduce her, I'll bring her up. But additionally, I just wanted to bring to your attention regarding activity that SoCal Gas is currently involved with. As you may be aware, that there's been a huge move by the state legislature and the CPUC to look at a particular study in terms of having our entire state to go electric. There is a big push and a big move. Currently, CPUC is having hearings throughout the state. And again, the entire idea in motion is looking to decarbonize our system, but within that, they're looking to rid our residents, the city of Garden Grove and the entire state, of natural gas and only use electricity as a force to conduct, you know, any type of activity within your home, your cook stove, your appliances, water heater, they want to make that all electric. So I want to make all of you aware regarding that item, and in a couple of weeks, I'll be reaching out to the city management to be able to establish meetings as we're looking for some support. Additionally, I'll just share you a little bit of background about myself. Again, raised here in the city of Orange County, raised my entire life in the city of Anaheim. I call Santa Ana home for the current time, but all I know is Orange County, and I love to be in this area. I'm very happy to be able to, for the next couple of months at least, to be able to be your representative from the SoCal Gas side. Additionally, I just wanted to share that SoCal Gas, going back to the notion of renewables, we're very excited to move forward with some new ideals within our gas, natural gas industry. SoCal Gas is looking to go into renewable natural gas. We're working very closely with an organization by the name of CRNR, which you may be aware of, the Environmental Waste Company. They're working with us capturing, breaking down organic waste, so food waste, in one of their facilities out in the Paris area, breaking those items down, capturing the biogas and using that biogas or natural gas to power their natural gas vehicles. And along with that, they're also putting in natural gas into our pipeline. So we're able to, you know, now using renewables to insert that into our pipeline and be able to present that to all our residents, you know, provide natural gas safe, affordable, reliable. And we have a very aggressive plan in the next coming years, that of 2020, we have 5% of renewable natural gas within our system, and by 2030, be able to have 20% of renewable natural gas. So we're looking at the future to be able to provide safe, affordable, and reliable energy. And with this information, I will now, I want to share, bring forth, Mr. Mayor, if you allow, Ms. Daisy Cristobal Sanchez, our outreach program lead, to provide some information regarding some programs we're bringing into the city of Garden Grove. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, member council.
Thank you, Juan. Daisy Cristobal Sanchez.
Yes, I. Hi, good afternoon. So as everyone mentioned, my name is Daisy Cristobal Sanchez, and I am the community outreach lead for our customer assistance program. So we have three programs that we promote throughout our entire service territory. And for those who don't know, we cover about 24,000 square miles in Southern California from Visalia down to the Mexican border. In that territory, we have all sorts of programs, energy efficiency, my programs deal with our care program, which is our 20% discount off of your natural gas bill. We also have our energy savings assistance program, where it's a weatherization and home, minor home repairs done by contractors that we work with, about 35 contractors onboard. I provided some packets that have some information there on all of our programs. We have them in all languages, a lot of languages, but the ones that I gave there are some examples of some of the stuff we have. We also do work in the disability community, so you'll see a larger format brochure that's for the visually impaired. We have our information in Braille, so we really want to make sure that all communities are aware of our programs. Those are the two income-based programs. So whether you're on a public assistance program or you qualify under the federal income guidelines, which go and change on June 1st, then those are the qualifications for those two programs. We also have an additional program, which is our medical baseline program. The medical baseline program, there is no income qualification, but if there is a need for additional gas service to be used due to health and comfort needs, a doctor can certify that, and through that, you can receive additional gas at a lower rate. So it really is helpful. Like, I always give the example for my grandmother, rest in peace, it'd be 80 degrees outside, and she somehow always needed to have the heater on. So those are the prime examples of somebody who would qualify for this program. There are some medical conditions listed on the pamphlet itself, but those don't necessarily cover it all. I did want to just give you guys that brief synopsis. I want to turn it over to my colleague, one of our contractors, Maravia Foundation is here today. They work with us in doing the energy savings assistance program. They, I've just given, they didn't fill out a card, but they, I was just going to give them half of my time, if that's okay.
They need to fill out a card.
They will fill out a card, I promise you. So they do actually work here in the Garden Grove community, and I wanted him to give you some time and tell you a little bit about what he does in some of the homes that he touches as well. Thank you.
We'll try to squeeze in the five minutes, okay, as we can. My name is Gil Malogen, and my colleague is John Yu. And we have a no-cost weatherization program. We work for the Maravia Foundation. Our organization's been around for, I'd say, 51 years as of this year. And our organization, we deal with the, we do the no-cost weatherization program, and we've been doing it for 35 years. We already served up to 150,000 homes and all through Southern California. Within the regions of Garden Grove or Orange County, we would like, if we could get your help, if possible, to pass the word out. That's our main concern, is going out there, speaking to the families. A lot of the families are unaware of our services. A lot of the families are out there, they, we speak quite a few languages in our agency, so we're out there to speak to the family, see if they qualify, if they do qualify for the service, they can receive, they can receive a water heater, furnace, weatherization, shower heads, we can replace their broken glass, also install the doors. So there's an array of work that we could do for the family that families are unaware of. So please, you know, reach out to us, we're there, we're here to stay for the next years to come. The CPUC has told us that, you know, we need to go out and spread the word out to not just where we cover Southern California, but all the areas in Southern California. So again, my name is Gil Malogen, and this is John. And if I could speak to someone maybe within the week, and I could leave my literature, and that'd be great. And thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you so much for the opportunity. Continue to be in communication. Thank you so much. Have a good day. Thank you.
Mayor Jones, before we start the clock, I would like to speak on item 3A also. So can I do that separately, or does it have to be at the same time?
Same time, because that's a consent item, so.
Okay. All right. Mayor Jones, mayor, members of the council, my name is Nicholas Dibbs. I have a number of items to go over. First off, I want to thank Mayor Jones and the council for putting on today's special event for graduates, college graduates of Garden Grove. And this was the seventh annual event, and I'm one of the sponsors for the third year. And I just am going to read part of my message to the graduates today. Someone once said, "When you discover a job and career you enjoy doing, you will never work a day in your life." As such, my first recommendation and advice to you, that is graduates of high school and college, is to choose jobs and a career or careers that you enjoy doing, because you will be devoting about 80,000 work hours during your lifetime. That's 40 hours a week, 50 weeks a year, times 40 years. Secondly, I ask you to please devote your talents and abilities and your precious lifetime of 80,000 work hours, working in a career to help achieve much-needed positive change, because it is the right thing for each of us and all of us to do. This means working to achieve a better future by helping others, your community, city, nation, and the world to be better than you found it. This also means putting people's welfare and the greater good of individuals and humanity ahead of greed, corruption, and unfair and unethical results and outcomes. In closing, please read Dr. Martin Luther King's Beyond Vietnam speech. And most importantly, be sure to do all and everything you can to devote and dedicate your life's precious time, work, and endeavors, helping others and yourself to help achieve a better future, community, nation, and world very much in need of positive change and freedom with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for listening, and wishing each of you, the graduates of Garden Grove, the best of success in all your positive change endeavors. So I share that tonight, and it's equally important for the students that are in the room who are either in high school or college. Secondly, I want to revitalize my, or re-mention the need to bring back our Youth and Government Day program, and also mention that the Kaiser Foundation for Wellness has, is in support of having cities do youth commissions. Now, last year, I was able to be a guest or present during the Youth and Government Day program for the city of Huntington Beach. So I have that program for each of you. We did, after a couple of years of my coming to these council meetings and the school board meetings, the city did do Youth and Government Day, brought it back in 2018. Let's bring it back for 2020. So I'm going to pass this around. Let's please bring back Youth and Government Day and get the youth involved, not only in Youth and Government Day, where 61 high school students participated last year from throughout the Garden Grove Unified School District, but also having more activities for youth. And which brings me to the next item, which is the proclamation of item 3A, which is this is Mental Health Awareness Month, which means we don't just focus on mental health issues in May, but we are bringing it up in May. But let's have, a lot needs to be done in this area. There was, students are committing suicide here and there, different ones are having problems. The government of the United Kingdom has, is urging parents to limit their children, the child's social media time to two hours a day. And the problem is, is you have kids taking their smartphones to bed, you have teenagers spending hours and hours and hours on social media. Now, what does that have to do with the city? What the city can do is have a number of things, including more art programs, more Strider bike event for youngsters, have suicide prevention, Prop 63, I've been told, and Orange County Board of Supervisor Chair Lisa Bartley, I've been told, has, they've provided $600,000 to help. Let's have safe bike and walking to schools, more arts programs, and activities to get the students and the children away from their smartphones and into the, into being out in the outdoors, doing things. We need more of that, and so I'm urging the council to do whatever it can to promote and have more programs. And let's have safe walking and biking to school. Instead of everybody being driven to school, why not get them out walking and doing more things? I think all of you are probably in favor of these, but let's do more of it. So I am in support of the resolution that you're going to be passing, and we need to do more in this area. And there's, it's a big subject, there's a lot of information out there, but the smartphones and the social media is damaging the development of youngsters, and particularly those teenagers and youngsters who are just spending too much time on their smartphones. So let's have more programs in that area to get them off of those phones. So thank you very much for listening, and I mentioned a couple of websites. One is savethekids.us, savethekids.us. And we need to have more social emotional learning. And we need to have more social, emotional learning, bringing in, let's reduce crime by having our police officers who are in the schools have the psychological dogs that they can take with them and build the rapport with the students. So you can go to socialemotionalpos.com and get information there. So those are some of the things that are going on. As a teacher and an educator and a longtime resident of Garden Grove and a candidate for school board in 2016, I urge the council to work with the school district. And the other thing is, we need to have bike programs and things, and the school district has a huge parking lot at the Stanford headquarters, and that can be used for having our striker, strident, excuse me, our events with the bicycle and contests and so on. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Nick. Anybody else wishing to speak on an item that is not listed on the agenda tonight? All the other cards, I think I have separated out for different agenda items. Okay. So seeing none, that closes oral communications. We're going to recess to successor agency. I'll call the order. Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Member Brightigum?
Here.
Member O'Neill?
Here.
Member Tu Ha Wen?
Here.
Member Kim Wen?
Here.
Vice Chair Bowie?
Yeah.
Chair Jones?
Here.
And Member Klaffenstein is absent.
Okay, we already did oral communications simultaneously with city council consent items. We have two, just receive and file the minutes and approval of the warrants. Do I have a motion?
I move a motion.
Second.
Call to vote.
Motion received, six yes votes.
Any matters from successor agency members? Okay, seeing none, we will...
Nothing said I voted no.
Member Brightigum?
Yes.
Member O'Neill?
Yes.
Member Tu Ha Wen?
Yes, I'm here.
[laughing].
Member Kim Wen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bowie?
Yes.
And Chair Jones?
Yes.
Motion received, six yes votes.
All righty, thank you. Any matters from agency members? Seeing none, we will adjourn back to city council. And that takes us on to consent items. It's recommended that items 3A through 3H be acted on simultaneously unless anyone would like to pull an item. Do I have any pulls? Have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call to vote? Want to try it again?
Yeah, I'll try it.
See what happens.
[laughing]. Hit the right button.
See how this thing works.
Hey, that's what?
Well, you think it...
I think it did. Thought it did last time.
It shows right on my screen, but when I finalize it. Motion received, six yes votes.
Woo, yay! Perfect.
Oh, Stephanie. Yeah, she actually...
[laughing].
Got it.
He's watching on TV, though, you know it.
[laughing].
All righty, that takes us to public hearings. We have one, item 4A.
4A is approval to rebrand the Shop Local initiative BIG and consider approval of a new vehicle rebate program for Garden Grove residents. And we have Veronica Avala and Ms. Lisa Kim here to provide the report.
[inaudible] Oh, there we go. Good evening, mayor and city council. Tonight, we're presenting the rebrand of the city's Shop Local program, Buy In Garden Grove, also known as BIG. To give you a little background about the program, last year was the 10th anniversary of BIG, a program created to help keep needed tax dollars in the city for services like public safety, roads, parks, and quality of life needs. The program also assists the business community by strengthening the business economy, increasing patronage and sales, as well as retaining local jobs and employment growth. In addition, businesses also benefit from the free exposure through visibility on the city's website, social media sites, helping to create a consumer loyalty. Several new components have been added to BIG's relaunch, including a new logo, creative tagline, enhanced website, integration of a GIS map, and more shopper incentives, like new participating businesses, seasonal promotions and special giveaways, combined discount packages, and a vehicle rebate program for Garden Grove residents. BIG's new logo is a modern twist to the previous logo and incorporates BIG's tagline, "Think Big, Buy In Garden Grove." For the past several years, the city has used the tagline as a hashtag in social media posts that highlight local businesses. Think hashtag BIG, buy in hashtag Garden Grove. In addition to upgrading the logo, BIG's current website will be updated with new images that not only make the page even more dynamic and visually appealing, but are Garden Grove businesses and locations. Another exciting feature on the new webpage is a GIS map that lists all BIG businesses. The GIS map is functional on both desktop and mobile, and includes a category filter so users can easily search for what they're looking for, like retail or restaurants. Each business is represented by a pinpoint on the map, and each pinpoint directs users to a business detail page. The detail page includes important information, such as the business logo, address, website, contact info, BIG discount, and their social media handles, including Yelp. Approximately 100 businesses participate in BIG, with new businesses invited to sign up for free. The Office of Community Relations is working with the Office of Economic Development and the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce to expand business participation. To further promote shopping local, the city created the end-of-year campaign, Black Friday Goes BIG, which has grown in popularity within the community. We're looking to add additional special seasonal promotions throughout the year. Another new component is the combined discount packages, where we encourage businesses to work together to offer patrons combined discounts. Those packages can be a staycation in the Grove District Anaheim Resort, dinner and a movie for two at the Chapman Promenade, or a dessert and boba on Main Street. In addition to collaborating with shopping centers, the city is working with the Garden Grove Auto Center to offer residents a rebate when they purchase a new car or truck. Here to speak about the vehicle rebate program is Community Development Director Lisa Kim.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. Thank you, Veronica, for highlighting the rebranding of Buy In Garden Grove. It's been a positive effort collaboratively between the Office of Community Relations and the Office of Economic Development, and I'm pleased to bring forward another component as part of BIG, which is the Vehicle Rebate Incentive Program. It is a partnership with all of our six new vehicle dealerships that will be participating and providing local residents and businesses the opportunity to receive a $500 rebate for each new car vehicle purchased in Garden Grove. As Veronica highlighted, it will be associated with new vehicle, associated with new cars or new truck purchases. In addition, each resident or business is required to provide some additional information in order to receive the rebate. The participating dealers will be required to submit verification of the purchase agreement and confirmation that the purchase is made by a local Garden Grove residence or a local Garden Grove business via a local Garden Grove business license. Tonight, in order to implement the vehicle rebate program, as it's associated with an economic development incentive, a public hearing is required to implement this program. At this time, staff is recommending the council take action on the following items: requesting approval to proceed with rebranding our Buy In Garden Grove Shop Local program; request to convene a public hearing relating to the vehicle rebate program; approve the template for the participation agreement associated with each participating dealer. I think before you, there is a, some minor amendments associated with the participation agreement that we would like to incorporate into your action this evening; and lastly, to authorize the city manager to implement the program. Staff is available for any questions you may have associated with BIG or the vehicle rebate program and all the elements as part of that. So that concludes my staff report, and available for questions.
Thank you, Veronica. Thank you, Lisa. Before we open for public comment, is there any questions of staff at this time?
Mayor, question. So the $500 for Garden Grove residents and business owners, right? If they purchase a vehicle from one of our car dealerships, they get that $500.
That's correct. It's handled in the transaction with the new car dealer. So each resident or potential business would receive a reduction of $500 in their purchase price. So our partnership with each Garden Grove dealer is they would advance the rebate on behalf of the city and submit a request for reimbursement monthly through the city's reimbursement program. We are excited that, in working with our ID, IT department, the submittal of the request for reimbursement will be handled online, and so it will be streamlined to assist each participating dealer with the submittal and reimbursement process.
The dealers themselves would do the paperwork, not the...
That's correct.
And that's kind of the thing that, something in the back of my head, and I'm all for this. I want to come out and say, I think it's a great idea, it's a good way to reward our residents and business owners in the city. But I have some trepidation with the money coming from the dealership instead of the city, only because I know, you know, we've all dealt with those car salesmen, and, you know, they might not tell the resident they're entitled to it, and then pocket that money when they get it back, or, you know, there's things like that that could happen. So just food for thought. I know this is a baseline program, and we're just getting it off this, but just something to consider for future, should, you know, should we need to look at it or something?
Appreciate the feedback. We'll certainly report out to the council and the performance of the program in the next 12 months, and if there's any adjustments needs to be made, we will report that at that time.
I just want to see this money actually go into the community and not rewarding these dealerships, basically, so much, you know?
So part of the program does include if there's any adjustments or true-up, so there are provisions within the agreement with each participating dealer that we will audit periodically. And so during that process, we'll be able to vet through some of the concerns you just expressed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or clarification questions before we hear from the public? Okay. We'll open the public hearing. I do have two cards. So Todd Priest?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm Todd Priest with the Orange County Automotive Dealers Association, and we're really here tonight to say thank you for letting us participate in your, in your program. Garden Grove hasn't included the auto dealers previously, so we're excited to now be a participant in the program that's going to allow your residents benefiting by getting additional savings by purchasing their car here in town. So council members, your comments are well taken, but know that these are incentives that don't go to the auto dealers, they go to your residents and your business owners who buy cars and trucks from one of your participating dealers. And I wanted to thank the city manager and Ms. Kim for all the work on this and inviting us to be a part of this program. We are excited that Garden Grove sees that it's important that your residents participate in the full economy of your city, and we're pleased to be a part of that program. So thank you.
Thank you, Todd. Carolyn Kaveti.
Good evening, Mayor Jones and members of the council. Carolyn Kaveti, I'm here on behalf of the Orange County Taxpayers Association in support of this program. Council member, I appreciate your comments about that. These are tax dollars that are getting rebated, so they will obviously go back. A lot of people, a lot of taxpayers don't realize, I know you all do, that vehicle sales tax on cars is the one thing that a taxpayer can't leave their jurisdiction that they live in, no matter where they go. But our polling has found that a vast majority of taxpayers don't realize that. So they end up leaving Garden Grove to go into another city to buy a car and find out that they're still paying the increased tax, but the larger Bradley Burns portion of the tax, now Garden Grove has lost that. So this is, that's a lose-lose for everybody. It's a lose for the city, it's a loss for your businesses. So this is really a win-win, and we appreciate that. I appreciate your concern looking out for the taxpayers, so these dollars will go back. And again, thank you to the city staff for participating in this, and we're excited about the program. And I know your taxpayers are going to be very grateful to be able to get this portion back, so thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Anyone else wishing to speak on this particular item? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Comments, deliberation, motion?
I move approval.
I want to second it, but I have comments, just quick, briefly. I just wanted to thank staff for all the work that you've put into this. I know as a city, a lot of our money comes from sales tax, so it's really good to promote shopping local and encouraging our residents to spend their money here in Garden Grove. And so this program is really doing a great job of that, and you kind of commented on what I wanted to ask for, is to make sure that at some point you come back to us with a report that gives details on how much has increased, how many cars were purchased, things like that, so that we can show our residents and be transparent about our efforts with encouraging the shop local. We want them to see what that actually translates to, so thank you. And I second the motion to approve.
Just want to comment that we have a lot of program, and this is one of the very good programs that is a win-win for everyone, like the OC Tax Association had mentioned earlier. But I really like to see the, you know, how the program becomes successful, right? So every year, when we come to the council retreat, I really like to have a breakdown and report to see how well are we doing? Are we doing a lot better than just doing good? Those kind of information can give us the data that allow us to, whether we need to even make this program wider for other things, so that we can bring the value to the residents and to small businesses in our city. That's something that, you know, the management office can assure that you won't forget at the next retreat.
Yeah, actually, Councilman Bowie, that's a terrific comment, and your timing at the retreat will be a little more than six months after the program started, so it'll be a nice time. But I even anticipate giving the council some updates even prior to that, and so, you know, we want to track it and, you know, make sure that the program's successful. So we're excited about it, and we'll be reporting back to you regularly.
Wonderful.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Call to vote.
Motion received, six yes votes.
Okay, that takes us on to commission and committee matters. We have two. Item 5A.
Item 5A is approval of fiscal year 2019-20 Downtown Assessment District Number One Budget Adoption of Resolutions for Initiating Proceedings for the Leaving of Assessments for Fiscal Year 2019-20. Approving the Engineers Report and Adoption of a Resolution of Intention, fixing a time and date to conduct a public hearing. And Mr. Murray is here to give the report.
Thank you, Ms. Palmeroy, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. In March, the Downtown Commission approved fiscal year 1920 budget for maintenance services such as landscaping and minor improvements. For the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972, the city council must approve the proposed budget, direct staff to initiate assessment proceedings, and approve the Engineers Report. The assessment will raise approximately $27,000 in revenues. Therefore, tonight, council is asked to approve the Downtown Assessment District budget for this fiscal year, approve the Engineers Report, adopt the attached resolution of intention to levy and collect assessments, and set a public hearing for June 11th, 2019. This concludes my report, and I'm available should you have any questions.
Thank you. So tonight is not a public hearing item, correct?
That's correct.
That's why we're setting it for June 11th. Okay. Any other questions or comments of staff?
Yes, I think this is great that we, you know, keep making sure that, working hard to make sure that our infrastructure are in good place, good shape. But I have some general questions. I noticed that some script, it is deteriorate, you know, more than other scripts. And I noticed that a couple of scripts that I feel is Woodbury, Garden Grove Boulevard, it seemed to be in a little bit...
Yes, I think this is great that we, you know, keep making sure that, working hard to make sure that our infrastructure are in good place, good shape. But I have some general question. I noticed that some street it is deteriorate, you know, more than, than other streets. And I noticed that a couple of streets that I feel is Woodbury, Garden Grove Boulevard is seem to be in, in a little bit better shape than comparing to other streets. So could you kindly sometime in the, you know, in the next month or so, give us some insight into what are the criteria for us to fix this street rather than other street?
I think that's a question we can possibly answer offline. The, just in general, a short answer for that is that Main Street is kind of a special district and that's why they formed this, to handle their specific needs.
Oh, I see. I'm sorry, I'm looking, I'm jumping into 6A where I still have 5A. Okay, so sorry, that's no wonder why you're confused.
I do have one comment. This is an annual thing that keeps coming back every year and wouldn't this be more appropriate to do every five years instead of having to come back every year to the council? I mean, it has to get done. Can we approve it legally for a longer period of time so we don't have to keep addressing this year after year after year?
No, state law requires an annual assessment and the county assessor will require the annual assessment, a resolution annually. So we have to do it every year.
Thank you. Move approval?
Call to vote.
Motion received, six yes votes.
Okay, 5B, appointments to administrative board of appeals. We still do have two open seats that we did not appoint prior. So I've submitted two names to city clerk that were actually submitted to me for nomination and that's Kathy Ladd and Cindy Tran.
Cindy Tran, that's correct.
And if it's acceptable, I'd like to move those two names.
Second.
Call to vote.
Motion received, six yes votes.
Okay, which now takes us on to items for consideration, 6A and 6B. So we have 6A.
Item 6A is award of contract to All American Asphalt for Street Rehabilitation Project numbers 7211 and 7289, Euclid Street, Garden Grove Boulevard, Woodbury Road and Palmwood Sidewalk Improvement. And Mr. Murray is here to give the report.
Thank you, Ms. Palmeroy, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight's city council is being asked to award a contract to All American Asphalt for Street Rehabilitation Work on Euclid Street from Chapman to Catella, Garden Grove Boulevard from Brookhurst to Nelson, and for 750 feet of Woodbury Road just before Harbor. And sidewalk installation on Palmwood Drive from Vegas to Patricia. In general, the rehabilitation work can include full death reclamation with cement treatment. Failed sections will be removed and replaced. Asphalt overlay could be placed as well. Also, associated concrete work is also included. We will install filters and catch basins for the environmentally compliant. We will also restore traffic signing, striping, pavement markings, and we will reestablish the survey centerline ties and monuments. All this work is to be completed at a cost of almost $3.8 million. It should be noted that a portion of the project, and this is, I'm talking about Euclid Street, lies within the city of Anaheim and we will need to enter into a cooperative agreement, which is the subject of our next item here at council. Staff received and opened four bids on April 24th of this year and determined that All American Asphalt was the lowest responsible bidder. Should council decide to award the contract tonight, the contractor can begin work in June and should be complete before Halloween. This project is included in this year's capital improvement plan and will be paid for with measure M2 funds, gas tax, state tire recycling grant, and Anaheim will pay its fair share for the work done in its city limits. This concludes staff's report and I'm available should you have any questions.
Okay, so this is the one that I was wanting to ask. You explained to us before that certain major street that we have to, or not have to, but we want to, you know, take it out and redo everything from, you know, from the, from the bottom up because that would be the strategy to make sure that the main street where a lot of traffic flow through it will, will be at, you know, optimum condition rather than wait for it to, to fall off and it may be, it may cost more to, to repair. And, and I got that. But, you know, a lot of time, even though with that understanding in mind, I drive through Garden Grove Boulevard, I see that as the condition of the road is still very, very good, but compared to other street that we have, the condition is a lot, lot worse. Is there a way for us to move things around a little bit here and there so that we can deal with the other part of the city where the road condition seem to be, you know, in a worse shape than another one that we have like Garden Grove Boulevard?
Well, that's an excellent question, Councilmember Bowie. And it's kind of like bring up, you know, we haven't raised our gas tax prior to our SB1, which was just recently approved. I think it was about 20 years. And so consistently over that period, we've been falling further and further behind in our funding for our road projects. That's been compounded with lack of federal funding for about 10 years now. When we look at our projects to go and as a general statement, we, we always want to take care of our major arterials. Those are the, those are the streets that have anywhere from 35,000 to 50,000 vehicles per day on there. And as a result, when you're looking at a difficult funding situation, we will be put in, in a situation where we'll have to defer maintenance on local streets, which may only have 20 or 30 vehicles per day driving on them. And that's mostly due to a liability issue. If we have a pothole on Euclid that we're going to be working on, that could send a motorcyclist driving at 45, 50 miles an hour into a pretty dangerous situation if they hit it. The damage, just for one day of a pothole that gets a little out of shape could, you know, result in quite a bit of damage to vehicles. Also, it could cause, you know, possibly accident. So we, we take that into consideration and weigh very, very heavily compared to the same condition on residential street. Most of the people that drive on residential streets are familiar with the street, so if there's a pothole, they, they'll name it and avoid it. And, you know, they'll, they'll call and complain and we will do our best to get out there, but generally, you know, I know that we have a lot of situations where people drive excessively, but generally, you're supposed to be driving about 25 miles an hour. So you shouldn't go flying off your motorcycle or get into an accident in your car or really damage your, your rims, so to speak, if you are following, you know, the local speed limits. So now that we have had Senate Bill 1 passed, we're going to be looking at catching up, so to speak. If we have anything that's going to slow that process, it's going to be trying to pick up some of the storm drain improvements that are desperately needed in this community. So, you know, we're, we're doing some work on and going, you're going to be seeing those come up again where we really haven't had them. They disappeared from our CIP for the better part of a decade. So we're also looking forward to the federal government passing an infrastructure bill, which everybody continues to say they're excited about and want to talk and get it, you know, get it done, but that's going to require bipartisan bills. So we'll hold my, I'm holding my breath on that one. But as soon as we get that money in, we'd be more than happy to incorporate that and make the city a little bit safer.
Thank you for the clarification and just don't name any pothole after me, okay?
I think they name them after me.
Any other questions or a motion?
Motion to, well, second.
Call to vote.
Motion received, six yes votes.
Item 6B is approval of cooperative agreement with the city of Anaheim for the rehabilitation of Euclid Street from Patricia Drive to Catella Avenue. And again, Mr. Murray is here to give the report.
And again, thank you, Ms. Palmeroy, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. This is directly related to the previous item I just spoke on. And it's a cooperative agreement for Anaheim and it's for the portion of the project that lies within their city limits. The agreement pays for, is going to pay for approximately 45,000 square feet, 45,000 square feet of pavement rehabilitation. And we estimate that that cost is going to be just a little bit over $405,000. So it kind of gives you an idea about how much it costs to redo the, you know, per square foot. Staff recommends obviously approval of the agreement and this concludes my report and I'm available should you have any questions.
Any questions, motion?
Quick question on Anaheim has agreed to pay their portion already. We just have to get it formalized, is that...
We've, we've got an agreement with their staff and then now that we've approved this, it will go to their city council and they, they will approve it. These are fairly common between cities where we have projects that kind of overlap. I think that we are going to be paying for some work that Santa Ana is going to be doing on Euclid really quick. And that's further south, obviously.
Move the motion?
I just wanted to mention real quick that for, for the public out there, so going northbound on Euclid is really, a lot of that is the Anaheim portion. If you're going south on Euclid from Catella to Chapman, that's Garden Grove.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Or a second?
I'll second it.
Call to vote.
Motion received, six yes votes.
Thanks, Bill. Okay, that takes us on to matters. We do have a couple listed, so on to 7A.
Sorry.
Take it away.
It's a transmittal of the 2019 Downtown Parking Management Strategic Plan is requested by city manager Stiles and we do have a report and a, and a PowerPoint presentation from Elena Chang and Lisa Kim.
Thank you, Mrs. Palmeroy. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. In 2014, as a response to early reimagined initiatives, there were the community expressed a desire to have a public art, new bike lanes, more community events, musical performances, market food halls, and at the top of the list was a concern to accommodate enough parking for future development and entertainment. Therefore, leading to the city council request to complete a downtown parking management strategic plan. In 2017, council awarded the contract to Farr and Pierce, a transportation, planning, and engineering firm. Also, as part of the process was the formation of a parking advisory committee in which the members assisted with the RFP evaluation process and each milestone associated with the preparation of the draft plan. This is the first comprehensive study that has been conducted for parking utilization in the downtown civic center area. Previous parking studies were always associated with particular projects or a zone change. The city will use the plan as a toolbox or guiding document to help prepare for future build-out and be ready for any impact that it may bring. Study is a point-in-time count in June 2017 and recorded to form a general baseline of parking spaces in the downtown area. A hard copy of the plan with the data results was also included, which you receive with your agenda materials and also it's attached to the agenda report. I'd like to introduce our consultant, Spencer Reed from Farr and Pierce, and he'll be doing a quick presentation on the key tasks for the city.
Hello, Mayor, city council. My name is Spencer Reed. I'm with Farr and Pierce. It's my pleasure to be here this evening to present the downtown parking strategic management plan and to discuss with you the work that was completed as part of this plan development. I'd like to take a moment and thank the Garden Grove Community and Economic Development Department, as well as the Planning Services Division for all their support and insight during this project, as well as the parking advisory committee that was developed at the outset of this project for all their support and insight into the project as well. Jumping off into tonight, have a quick outline for everyone. Just really wanted to talk to you about the work that was completed, the data collection process, the analytics behind identifying parking management strategies, and then recommendations moving forward. So the purpose of this project, kind of the guiding principle we operate under was identification of parking management strategies that can be implemented as needed for future success in downtown Garden Grove. And as we see it, downtown Garden Grove is successful. This is not about trying to create something that doesn't already exist, but really trying to foster that success with parking management strategies that can be used as needed. It's not to say that there aren't parking issues already. There are, and again, as, as was stated, this was one point in time. But by and large, there is parking available and this plan is to really help better utilize that parking as development occurs and as issues are discovered. So starting off, the study consisted of a comprehensive data collection program. We began with data collection in June 2017. We worked with both staff and our parking advisory committee to identify two data collection days, one of which was a Tuesday, the other which was a Friday. Those days were selected to account for things such as city council meetings and the Main Street Car Show. These counts did not account for things such as the Strawberry Festival or football games or whatever it may be, because we were really looking for typical daily conditions. We addressed that in the document and that is something to be concerned about, but as we learned in working with our advisory committee, that a lot of the strategies we're already talking about are implemented on a de facto basis with some of the groups that have events in downtown. So when you're looking at the parking data, there are approximately 2,700 total parking spaces, which we counted. These spaces consist of both publicly accessible or publicly owned and privately owned spaces, on-street and off-street. Looking at all of those parking spaces, regardless of who owns them, 2,700, 2,786 spaces, we had a peak parking demand of approximately 49% occurring on Tuesday around 10:00 in the morning. After it peaks at 10:00 in the morning, parking demand declines through the evening. Friday had a very similar trend, a peak around 10:00 in the morning and a decline through the evening. However, we did see a slight parking demand increase on Friday evening due to the car When we look at the publicly owned spaces, we see the demand trends very similar to all spaces. We had a peak demand of approximately 59% at 10:00 in the morning against declining throughout and the same occurring on Friday. However, you see the demand on Friday and the evening a little higher, again, because the car show occurs on Main Street and people park in both the Main Street West and Main Street East lots. The privately owned spaces, again, very similar to the total and to the publicly owned, but just less parking demand in general. In addition to the data collection aspect, we also conducted a online parking survey. Our survey consists, or had about 224 respondents. It was provided online and shared by a number of businesses in the downtown area. There were about 13 questions in total. Question five had asked periods of time and days of the week in which visitors of downtown visited the area, and we found that predominantly people were coming to downtown on weekend and weekday evenings. Question nine really got into the crux of a discussion that we had in our advisory committee and that being how far would someone be willing to walk from their parking space to their destination? Majority of folks identified three minutes as the, the willingness they would be going to walk. For context, three minutes is about the same distance it would take you to walk from Main Street to Euclid Street or from the Gem Theater to Garden Grove Boulevard. Using the data collected and the survey results, we developed a parking demand model with information from the Urban Land Institute to estimate parking demand as planned and possible projects come into the downtown area. Assuming that those projects do implement some of their own parking, we estimated that parking supply should be sufficient for those existing projects, planned projects, and possible projects. One thing I'd like to address while I have a moment is disruptive trends in parking. As I'm sure you all are aware, there's been a number of changes in transportation technology over the past six or seven years. We really grew up in a time period of people owning their own vehicle or renting a vehicle, maybe riding a taxi or taking a bus, but in the last six or seven years, smartphones and technology has really changed that. Things like TNCs, transportation network companies, or Uber and Lyft have really changed the way... the way people get around. Instead of driving themselves, looking for a parking space, finding one, and, you know, visiting businesses, they use their phone, hail a ride, get dropped off, that car goes somewhere else, and they do their thing, and then hail a different car and, you know, go wherever they wanted to be. As we went through our parking strategies, we really wanted to be cognizant of the technology that's already been changing and future changes, and really thinking about other things that could occur. More of the sharing economy, as we like to discuss, sharing, you know, cars, bicycles, scooters, whatever the case may be, or, you know, what could be done with, you know, more smartphone implementation, and what can the city do, or what can the businesses do to help support that. So that led us on to parking management strategies. The plan identifies approximately nineteen different strategies, and as we said, this is really a toolbox for us to implement. The table you see here identifies both a relative cost and time to implement. Lot of information in the document. I'm going to spend a few minutes just talking about a few of these in greater detail. The first I'd like to speak about is static signage, really kind of the bread and butter in terms of parking management. Very easy to implement, very easy to kind of develop. You know, if you really want someone to park in the parking lot off of Stanford, put up some signs on Euclid, direct them to Stanford, and making a right, and, you know, parking here or there, very easy to do. One of the challenges with static signage is, once you move that access point or that parking lot, the signage is more or less useless, and so you'll need to re-implement it somewhere else. But obviously, very cheap, very easy to do, and used throughout many cities throughout the United States. Another strategy is increased use of shared parking. This is something the city is already doing and implementing. But what shared parking is, is really identifying complementary uses. And what I mean by that is by saying you have an office building and a residential building, and they both use the same parking lot. So what you'll see is that during the day, eight AM to five PM, the office workers are using the parking lot, using those spaces. As they leave at five PM, the residents who live in the apartment building right next to it, they come in and use the same exact parking spaces that the office workers have now vacated. Helps us by not building double the amount of parking spaces, and we can use what we already have. Again, this is a strategy that's already been implemented in Garden Grove in select instances, and it's something that could be implemented in the downtown area as demand increases or as new projects come online. One of the things to be cognizant of is you really want those land uses to be complementary. It wouldn't make sense to have shared parking between two office buildings, because they would both have demand characteristics that are fairly similar. Accommodating Transportation Network Companies, TNCs, as I mentioned, disruptive trends, Uber, Lyft, e-scooters, e-bikes, these are all things that are coming around, changes in transportation. One thing that we have seen success in other cities is dedicating select parking spaces, on-street spaces, into designated pickup and drop-off zones for TNCs. The benefit you have in this is that instead of having one car take one space for an hour, you could have four, five, six, seven, eight cars using that one space, dropping off carloads of people, picking them up, and really helping turnover in your commercial core area. One thing to consider with TNC usage is that it's really successful where you have a high number of visitors, so hotels, restaurants, retail, very good for TNC usage. Things like apartments, not as much. We really want to identify things that are going to drive a lot of visitor traffic. Implementing traffic calming, or traffic calming in urban design. Throughout our survey, we found a number of respondents who said that they would really like to see improvements in both pedestrian infrastructure, bicycle infrastructure, traffic calming, just overall sense of place. And so what this strategy does is not so much builds more parking, or takes away parking, or anything of that, but it entices people to park their car in one space and then walk to somewhere else. So what we would think about in this is maybe some development on Main Street, and someone wanting to walk to City Hall, developing a sense of place, and when you walk down Acacia that there is something to see, something to do, places to sit, shade, things of that nature, really enticing people to not move their car half, a quarter of a mile, half a mile, from one space to another. Another benefit to this level is traffic calming and just slowing down that traffic, and really, again, developing a sense of place as part of the reimagined Garden Grove program. And then finally, the last strategy I'd like to talk about is adding off-street parking. I think for a lot of people, they think adding more spaces are kind of the silver bullet in terms of parking management. There is some data out there that says there are about six off-street parking spaces for every car in the United States. So building more parking is not necessarily the solution. We have plenty of parking for all of our vehicles. But building more parking is a solution that may be necessary if and when there is legitimately no parking available. But I think one thing that we also need to be considered of is that building parking is expensive. When you want to build a surface space, you're talking five to ten thousand dollars per space. Structured space, it's twenty to thirty thousand dollars, and a subterranean underground space is thirty to forty thousand dollars. That's a fiscal cost. Another important cost is understanding that every parking space you build is lost opportunity for doing something else. So you build a parking space, that's three-hundred-and-fifty square feet, that could have been a park, another business, a home, something else of that nature. So again, a good strategy, but really wanting to be used on a kind of last-case, you know, worst-case scenario basis. So I'd like to just talk about kind of steps moving forward and our recommendations. As was stated, this plan is a toolbox with a number of different tools or strategies that can be implemented as needed. We've identified a number of situations in which implementing these strategies may be appropriate, the first being under regular parking demand review. As was stated, our data collection is one point in time, and what we would recommend is that staff in the city conduct regular parking demand review to better understand changes in parking demand. As new projects come online and are developed, you'll see changes in parking, and if you're seeing concerns or issues with that, then you can go back to the toolbox and implement a strategy as needed. Another being implementing strategies in new developments, so as you have developers coming in, or projects coming online, if you know, or they know, that the parking that they're going to supply is not going to be sufficient, then you can implement some of these programs. The other is parking strategies based on request, by understanding and talking with business owners, or yourself, or your own staff. If you all feel that there is an issue, again, you have this toolbox you can fall back on. And then finally, understanding future change. So, you know, as part of your planning process, your general plans, your downtown plans, things of that nature, you can look at this toolbox, again, as another way to plan for the future, for technology changes, for anything that you may encounter, and again, have this toolbox to dig into. With that, I'd thank you for your time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about the plan.
Any questions? Is there any action item on this, or it's just a kind of a receiving file?
It's recommended that the city council receive and file a downtown parking management strategic plan, which includes existing and future conditions report, parking management strategies, and recommendations for future implementation as needed.
Yeah, just move to receiving file, I guess.
Second.
I'll the vote.
Motion received, six yes votes.
Okay, that takes us on to item seven B, as requested by Councilmember Kinwin.
Item seven B is a discussion regarding flying the LGBT flag during June at City Hall, as requested by Councilmember Kinwin.
Could we move forward with comments, and then I'll speak after?
Sure. Okay, so I do have ten cards to speak on this item, so I'm going to call you up, and I would just ask, out of courtesy, if you could maybe keep your comments concise and down to a few minutes, that would be great. Otherwise, at five minutes each, that could be an hour's worth of public comments just right there. So try and get to it, and not be redundant on each other. Tom Raiber.
Hi, I'm Tom Raiber, and I didn't want to come back here tonight, but I read on Facebook of this article that was out there about a flag that you're voting on or discussing to be flown in City Hall. So today, I took a little trip to City Hall. Not too sure of how many people have been to City Hall, but there is no place to fly a flag at City Hall. All the flags are internal of City Hall. The four flags right behind you are to the right when you enter City Hall. The American flag, this California state flag, Orange County flag, and the Garden Grove flag. Those are flags of our country. To the left, right where the ATM is, is our service personnel, the Army, the Navy, the Marines, the Air Force, the National Guard. All those are right there to the left. If you walk outside on Civic Center, you have the Garden Grove Serviceman and Servicewoman Memorial. There's four flags there. You've got your American flag, California flag, Garden Grove flag, and the POW flag flying there. The flag solo in the middle of Civic Center is not even owned by the City of Garden Grove, thanks to Omar over here, that the lodge owns it. In front of the police station, you have four flags. The American, the California, the Garden Grove, and the Sister City flag. And in front of the fire department, you have one flag, the American flag. The only ones that are on poles are a memorial, the police memorial, and in front of the fire department. Those are what I would consider flags of our country. They are a non-organization, nonprofit. Now, what's being discussed right now is an organization and is a profit, a nonprofit organization. If you allow this flag to sit or stand within City Hall, then I myself am requesting right now that my Lutheran flag also is allowed inside City Hall. All seven of you, except for Stephanie's not here, swore on the Bible to uphold the Constitution and all local laws, not to go ahead and use your own opinion on what is right and what is wrong. You are there to go ahead and enforce the government here in Garden Grove. I had families that fought in the wars. Luckily, none of them that I know of died in the wars. And I don't think that any place in City Hall needs to have an organization or a nonprofit organization visible that I have to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Vincent Tran.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Vincent. I'm the Community Engagement Coordinator for Viet Rise, located in Garden Grove. I'm here to express my support for flying the LGBTQ flag during Pride Month at City Hall. This will be both a physical and visual gesture of inclusivity and kindness from the city. Many youth in Garden Grove continue to live in a state of fear of whether or not their identity will be accepted by their family and community. Others continue to experience bullying and harassment because of their sexual orientation. Not only does this impact students' educational achievements, but also negatively impacts their mental health. This is an important opportunity for the city to show that the city values tolerance, equal rights, and love. The City Hall is right across from Garden Grove High School, and countless youth come here on a daily basis to study at the library. And imagine how empowered the youth of Garden Grove will feel when they look over at City Hall and see the LGBTQ flag flying. They will know that their city, their home, their community accepts their identity and will protect their identity. Just six days ago, the City Council of Costa Mesa also approved the flying of the LGBTQ flag. I hope Garden Grove will do the same. Thank you.
No last name.
Good evening, council members. My name is Allison, and I'm a resident of Garden Grove. I'm the Youth Organizing and Campaign Coordinator at Viet Rise, and I'm here in solidarity with our friends, V-Rock, Viet Rainbow of Orange County. I am Viet. I am queer. History has often tried to marginalize and erase my community. But we know the LGBT community is resilient and has created enormous strides for social justice in history. And even in our very own community, organizations like V-Rock have provided meaningful education and important outreach to support our community, to ensure we can survive, exist, and celebrate in our authentic and whole selves. By flying the LGBT flag during June, our city is sending a statement that we are willing to honor the contributions and livelihoods of the LGBTQ+ community from the past, in the present, and for our future. Councilmembers, flying the flag means you are willing to recognize our existence and humanity, that you're willing to recognize us as people who have always belonged to our community. Furthermore, you are showing our people, young, old, ones who are here, the ones who are no longer with us, but their spirits continue to exist and guide us, that they matter, that we matter and belong in history because our foundational in creating history, because we know a more just and equitable society is possible. We are part of this community. We have always have been, and we will always be here. Be with us. Show us that you value us like you would value any other community member. My community will celebrate in June. Let's fly the flag and celebrate together as a city proudly.
Good evening, City Councilmembers. My name is Tracy Law, and I'm the Executive Director of Viet Rise. We're a community organization that works with the Vietnamese community around civic engagement, community organizing, and youth leadership development. We actually just opened up our office and moved in in Garden Grove just last week. And I'm here to speak in favor of flying the LGBT flag during June and recognizing June as Pride Month. So as I mentioned earlier, at Viet Rise, we work with young and youth, young people and youth Vietnamese community members to strengthen their personal and cultural empowerment, not just in their Vietnamese identity, but in all the identities that make up who they are. The LGBTQ identity is an important part of many Vietnamese people's histories and their identities. For you all at City Council to fly the flag and recognize June as Pride Month would be an important symbolic action by the City Council to honor all the beautiful identities that make up Garden Grove residents and many Vietnamese residents. I'm not sure if you all know, but Vietnamese people now make up, are the large population of Vietnamese people in Orange County is in Garden Grove. And that they're doing this and taking this step is a huge symbolic action for all of us. I strongly urge the City Council to be bold and to show that you understand and support the changing identities, needs, narratives, and people that make up our communities. Therefore, I hope you take this step to recognize June as Pride Month and fly the Rainbow Flag proudly. Thank you.
Lucy Ngo.
My name is Lucy Ngo. I'm speaking today on behalf of Viet Rainbow of Orange County, otherwise known as V-Rock, and nonprofit. LGBTQ people are not nonprofit. V-Rock was established in Garden Grove to advocate for the social and political inclusion of LGBTQ+ people. Our vision is to work towards a world where all individuals are treated equally, aligned to the reality of human diversity, and empowered to reach their full potential. We were established because the community didn't recognize us, and six years later, we're still fighting to be seen. The Rainbow Flag is celebratory of our community and the strides LGBTQ+ residents have made in Garden Grove. By flying the flag, the Rainbow Flag, it shows our existence, our breath. This is a small step to acceptance within our community. Sorry, it's been a long night. If this flag is not proudly flown, it invisibilizes our contributions to our community, but most importantly, our identities, our presence, and our worth. Garden Grove erasing queer identities isn't a new thing. In the 1960s, Garden Grove police harassed LGBTQ+ patrons in gay bars and eventually all the city. In 2007, Garden Grove schools discriminated against a queer student for displaying public affections that led to multiple suspensions and disciplines. Let's be better. Let's show that we exist. In 2018, y'all recognized June as Pride Month, and Pride is coming up. How are y'all celebrating that? Garden Grove is a city of youth and ambition. Let's listen to our youth and be ambitious to be better. Let's start with the Rainbow Flag. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, council members. My name is Jared Wallace. I'm a five-year resident of Garden Grove, and I teach at Garden Grove High School. And I just wanted to come here to show my support for the motion for the Pride Flag. The LGBTQIA+ community has been in Garden Grove for as long as its existence and has been... They've been great contributors to our community, and participating in Pride Month and showing this flag would be a great way to commemorate their contributions to our city, as well as the struggles that they've had to go through. Cities all over our country, and even some in Orange County, have been flying Pride Flags during Pride Month for years, and they're no less patriotic than they are. Society hasn't fallen apart in those cities. Pride's not a for-profit. It's for love, and it's for protection of our citizens and their rights. 2019 is going to mark the 50-year anniversary of the Stonewall riots and it's the 40-year anniversary of the flag being made, and I think it would be a great opportunity for us to make this year that we finally participate in this. Thank you.
Nguyen Hong.
My name is Nguyen, and I grew up in Garden Grove. I vote in Garden Grove, District 6. Woots, woots. And I love Garden Grove, right? So I'm speaking on behalf as an ally to the Viet Rainbow of Orange County V-Rock, and I am in support of this thing happening. So I will symbolically put this in my hair as a symbolic of the symbolic gesture, hopefully that you all take it, right? While I read this statement, because it's amusing. So V-Rock strives to create a more socially and politically inclusive environment for LGBTQ+ Vietnamese people. Not only are we LGBTQ+ Vietnamese people, we are also residents of Garden Grove. The city is home to a vibrant and diverse community. Throughout the past six years, V-Rock has worked to make Garden Grove an area, a safer place for LGBTQ people. Our advocacy, supportive services, civic engagement, and outreach efforts have impacted thousands of local residents here. When they go to local high schools and college campuses to do family acceptance workshops, audience members repeatedly tell them that they want to see a more inclusive Garden Grove. They want to see a Garden Grove where an LGBTQ kid feels safe at home, safe at home, safe at school, safe on the streets, hopefully with the transportation things happening around, and when they play outside. They want to see a Garden Grove where LGBTQ adults don't face discrimination in the workplace. So simply put, they want, we want, I want, a Garden Grove where everyone is not only feels safe, but also feels respected and valued as a member of this community. To make an important step towards that vision, we strongly ask this Garden Grove City Council to proudly display the Rainbow Flag in City Hall. This one action could bolster Garden Grove's public image as a leader in the movement towards inclusion of all people regardless of their sexual orientation and gender identity. So that's their statement. I'm just going to make a quick little thing. So it's really exciting to hear that you put the hand on the Bible when you pledged. There is a verse in the Bible about the rainbow and how that is God's promise to people and how it is a promise that he's not going to ever do it in damage or in pain to him. So as a proud Catholic who's gone to churches all over Garden Grove, west of Santa Ana, because that's where the Viet churches are, I wouldn't be feeling ashamed of my religion to see a flag that is also a reminder of God's promise to his people. So yes, thank you.
It's going to be hard to follow that. Mayor Jones, council members, my own representative, Councilwoman Kimberne Swin, I would like to thank you for allowing us to have a moment to discuss something that is so important in our community. I'm here before you, of course, to speak in favor of Item 7B and flying the Rainbow Flag during Pride Month. You know, Garden Grove, we're often thought of as a sleepy little town, but if you've lived here as long as I have, and I was raised here for good 24 years, you know that Garden Grove has been rapidly changing and is constantly growing. Our city, as such, is at the intersection of various communities, and all of these communities are proud to call Garden Grove their home. This intersection, this collaboration amongst these communities, is really what I think makes Garden Grove the greatest city of Orange County. And let's be honest, Garden Grove never stops trying to be its best. It always strives to do better. The Garden Grove does not shy away from being better. It has welcomed innovative businesses. It has welcomed refugees. And it has welcomed many families like my own which have decided to set roots down here in the city. I'm proud of my city. I want to continue being proud of my city. And I want this city to continue being a city where people are going to want to come and visit, to feel safe, to enjoy our spaces, to support our businesses. And I believe that in flying this flag, we're going to get a step closer into becoming an even better city. We have an opportunity today to show that we are continuing to flourish, that our city is accepting, that it's inclusive, and it's a place where we continue to grow and embrace the unique qualities of all of the communities that live here. Tomorrow, when the headlines hit about the City Council meeting today, and there will be headlines about the vote that happens at today's City Council meeting, people are going to make a choice. They are going to see the way that the discourse about this discussion went down, then they're going to decide whether Garden Grove is going to continue being the city that they visit, that they support, that they give their money to. They could continue coming here to Garden Grove, or they could just go a stone's throw away to cities like Anaheim, Santa Ana, Fullerton, Costa Mesa, where their city councils have found that flying the LGBTQ+ flag is a benefit to their community. So I urge all of you to see that this is a benefit to Garden Grove and support this measure. Thank you.
I have a card for Danielle Gomez and Alexis Herrera and Kathy Tran. Are you all three going to speak, or can you combo it into... Okay, great.
My name is Kathy Tran with Orange County Human Relations. We are a nonprofit passionate about making Orange County a better place for all people to live, work, and go to school and do business. I help coordinate the Bridges Program at Garden Grove High School right across the street, and I'm a proud product of Garden Grove School District. And so where we work with admin students, parents, and teachers to promote a safe, inclusive, and equitable school for all, I want to introduce two of our Bridges students who want to speak about Item 7B to support the flying of the LGBT flag during June at City Hall. So let me introduce Dani and Lexi.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Alexis Herrera, and I am an incoming senior at Garden Grove High School. I am a member of the Bridges Program, and I'm honored to use my voice to express my support. After a history of aggression, I am proud to see our country make progress in embracing the LGBT community. But now it is time to show support in our own community and in our own home. One of my dearest friends in school has overcome so much identifying as an LGBT member, but today, after the boys and the social media, it has made her a proud young woman. I'm here speaking not only on the behalf of my friend, but on behalf of each member of the LGBTQ community. The six-colored stripes on the flag is more than a colorful square of fabric. The flag symbolizes support from their home, community, and city of Garden Grove, of their identity. As a student at Garden Grove High School, I know our students will feel valued, which is why I believe it should be flown in our city.
My name is Danielle Gomez, and I am an incoming senior at Garden Grove High School, a part of the Bridges Program. And I am in favor of flying the LGBT flag. Growing up in Garden Grove, I witnessed violence and fear regarding the LGBT community. And I have a friend that also feared coming out for unacceptance. She struggled to love herself for who she is. And as my journey of a witness, schools have been more accepting to the LGBT community. Hanging the flag would provide more support and officialize an inclusive community. Pride allows us to be more diverse and peaceful among our friends. Love is something we should honor. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the consideration and the discussion today.
And last but not least, Mr. Charles Jones.
Good evening, residents, mayor, council members. I'm not a for-profit. I'm not a nonprofit, but I'm an out and proud member of the LGBT community. My name is Chuck Jones, and I was born and raised in Garden Grove. In fact, my grandfather, who served in World War II in 1925, was born right here in this city. My other grandfather fought and served in the Korean War as well. My family's actually been here since the late 1800s. And many of us still reside in the city. I'm here tonight for a few reasons. First, I would like to thank you. Last year, I had the pleasure of speaking before this council when you were considering proclaiming June as LGBT Pride Month. I shared stories with you of Garden Grove's long, rich gay history that dates back to I shared with you personal stories. I felt that I was heard, and your kind words during and after the meeting warmed my heart. When I was sitting in the back as you were about to take a vote, my heart raced, and then, as unanimously voted in favor of it, I couldn't help but cry. The city that I grew up in, the one that I loved so very much, said, "We see you, and you are welcome here." This was a healing moment for me. When I was growing up, I was made fun of because of my effeminate mannerisms. I was called faggot at school more times than I can count. In 1991, there was a huge gay rights protest along Garden Grove Boulevard that went right past the house I grew up. And earlier in the day before the protest, my father was talking to his friend about making a sign to display as the protesters went by. When his friend asked him what the sign should say, my father said, "How about 'Faggots Go Home'?" I was 11 years old, but I already knew that I was gay. So when I heard him say that, I began to think that I was broken. After I came out, the name-calling and bullying continued. I was even called faggot by my own father, and other family members told me I was going to hell. I'd like to say these things stopped as an adult, but they haven't. I've been called various slurs on the street and even at work. I have also been a victim of a hate crime. Myself and another man were viciously attacked for holding hands. My face was so badly beaten that my jaw still pops when I chew. I'm reminded of that attack every time I eat. And I'd also like to say that these things didn't affect me, but they have. I have anxiety every time I let someone know that I'm gay, because I don't know if they will accept me. I'm still working through the trauma of being bullied as a kid and even as an adult. The bullying has created feelings of inadequacy and being less than, and has caused years of anxiety and depression. I also fear for my safety everywhere I go. I ask myself, can I be me? Can I be open? Am I safe? I bring these things up tonight because we are discussing two things that coincide with each other: mental health awareness and displaying the LGBT Pride Flag. According to psychiatry.org, LGBTQ individuals are twice as likely as heterosexual men and women to have a mental health disorder in their lifetime. LGBTQ individuals are two and a half times more likely to experience depression, anxiety, and substance abuse compared to heterosexual individuals. The rate of suicide attempts is four times greater for lesbian, gay, and bisexual youth than heterosexual youth. With transgendered youth, the rate shoot up to 30%. Thirty-nine percent of older LGBT adults report serious thoughts of taking their own life. This one, I know all too well. Two years ago, I was sitting at my kitchen table with a bottle of wine, about 90 pills, ready to take my own life. According to National Alliance on Mental Illness, mental health disparities are linked to stigma and prejudice, often termed minority stress. Disparities in the LGBTQ community stem from a variety of factors, including social stigma, discrimination, prejudice, denial, denial of civil and human rights, abuse, harassment, victimization, social exclusion, exclusion, and family rejection. When I came out to my family, I was rejected by them. I was even made to eat off of paper plates, use plastic utensils, and use disposable cups. I'm happy to report, my mom is watching right now, that my family and I are very close. But during those early years, and after coming out, there was only one person that gave me hope, and that was my grandmother, Dorothy. My grandmother was a lifelong Garden Grove resident, and she passed away on April 6th at 93 years old. I remember stopping by her house to visit her, and we were chatting as we were walking out to my car. Without missing a beat, she asked me if the young man that I had previously brought to dinner was my boyfriend. This caught me off-guard because I hadn't come out to her yet. My parents hadn't quite adjusted to it, and I was nervous about what my grandmother would say. I nervously said yes. She winked at me, pointed, and said I knew it. I'm not sure if she meant she knew that I was gay, or if she knew that he was my boyfriend. My grandmother then asked about him, and I told her that we had just broke up. She simply gave me a hug and told me it would be okay. I share all of this with you because what I'm asking here tonight is for the City Council to think of the LGBT community and LGBT youth when considering both mental health awareness and how raising or displaying the Pride Flag could have a positive impact on their mental health. Not everyone is lucky as I was to have someone love and accept them unconditionally when no one else would. By displaying or raising the flag, the city can say, "We see you. You are welcome here, and you are a valuable part of our community." For those rejected by their families, or those that are bullied and harassed, let this flag be for them what my grandmother was for me.
That is all the cards I have, so we will go to Kim Nguyen, the bringer of the action.
I'm not sure that I could say anything more eloquently or more meaningful than the speakers that we've had today, and I just want to thank each and every one of you for coming here and sharing bits and pieces of your story or why your allyship is so important. This year marks the 45th anniversary of the first large-scale gay rights protest in Orange County that took place in Garden Grove. The first gay and lesbian center in Orange County was in Garden Grove, and it was opened in 1972. When it opened, it was egged, and it received several bomb threats. Christ Cathedral, one of our huge landmarks that also happens to be in District 6, was designed by an openly gay architect. In 1995, there was a concerted effort to remove gay and lesbian establishments from Garden Grove Boulevard. I can think back to 2005 when I was in high school at San Chago, and one of the students I knew came out and was hospitalized afterwards from being beat by his father. Luckily for him, one of our teachers ended up adopting him and formed the Gay Straight Alliance at San Chago High School. I decided to join as an ally, and it became very difficult because the school district wasn't supportive of our efforts, and so we had to stop the club from running. Three years ago, my younger sister came out to our family. As a young Latina coming out to her Latino family, it was very difficult for her. She did not know how we were going to take it, and I was deeply hurt that she didn't feel that she could come to me. But that's something that I had to understand and work through on my own as well. I didn't grow up with her. She lived far away, and she didn't feel like she could turn to me, so I felt like I was doing something wrong and not advocating for her. She went through spouts of suicidal tendencies and depression, and for me, advocating for this effort means standing in solidarity with her and so many of my young friends, older individuals in our city as well, who have had to suffer as a result of feeling that they couldn't be free and open with who they really are. It's not a choice. It's not a nonprofit. It's not something you can buy, or you can dictate or control. We strive to be inclusive, and we always say, "Mayor, I always hear you say this, we're a compassionate city, we're a welcoming city," but words only go so far. Sometimes you have to take bold action and do something to show meaning to your words so that they're not empty. I would also like to state that although Councilmember Klaufenstein could not be here today due to her being extremely sick, she did express support for this item and asked me to share that. that with everyone. I also asked our, I also asked our police chief, who is also in support. I know that there is many comments on Facebook and even here tonight about this being unnecessary or irrelevant, and it opens up a can of worms. And to that, I would like to say that anything that we approve as a council is on a case-by-case basis, and I would not shy away from supporting anything that is pertinent to our city, our residents, that is fitting of a month, or celebration, or a day. I don't see why we wouldn't celebrate accomplishments, individuals, groups, movements. We don't always do what's popular, but we're meant to do what is right. And I think that, given the long history that Garden Grove has with the LGBT community and essentially pushing them out, that this is a step in the right direction to make amends for that, and to show our residents that you're all welcome here regardless of race, religion, sexual orientation, et cetera, et cetera. We talk about this all the time, and I really ask that my colleagues put this on the agenda for the next meeting so that we can approve it. To clarify, I am asking that the flag be placed in our lobby, aside with all the other flags that are there. I'd like to also share that the cities of Anaheim, Costa Mesa, Fullerton, Santa Ana, and it actually is on the Buena Park City Council Agenda for tonight. We should join them and celebrate this community and show them that we're here for them. It's temporary, it's for the month of June, I'm not asking for you to have it here every single day, and so I hope that you guys would support this item and help me let everyone know that we are truly compassionate, welcoming, inclusive, and that we really are a city of youth and ambition, because we talk about that a lot, and we have several young members of our community here speaking on behalf of this item.
Any other comments or agendas for next week? But I guess if you care to make comments now, it'd be a time to do so.
I can make comments.
Please.
First of all, I just want to say thank you. It's very touching to see all the young faces participate at the city council. Speak, you know, speak out, speak up. That's one thing we are here for. We are a city of youth, city of unity, city of harmonious, and city of compassion. So I am here to support councilwoman to agendize it, and I believe that this place in the flag, much as a gesture, I think is bringing people together and equality. So I'm all for it.
Any other comments?
You know, to me, this is one of those things where you just are torn, you know? I think I'm the only military veteran here on this dais. I have many friends and family members who happen to be gay. I work with a lot of coworkers who happen to be gay. I have much respect for the LGBT community. But I also see the non-governmental flag issue in City Hall, and I don't necessarily support non-governmental flags being flown on governmental facilities. So I'm kind of, you know, in one of those split situations. I think we forget that, you know, hearing some of the speakers, and you guys did a great job, I mean, you really did, hands up. You talked about the flag and what it represented, you know, acceptance, tolerance, equal rights. I think one speaker talked to the changing identities of the city. And yeah, all that's true, but I think we forget that we actually have a flag already up there that does represent all of that, and that's the American flag. You know, having bifurcated cultures, bifurcated, you know, mentalities, I don't think it helps the country, I really don't. And I do understand that application, so, you know, I am one of those guys, I'm really caught, because I really am a supporter of the LGBT community, and, but I also don't think that that's an appropriate venue for non-governmental flags. And by that, I mean, you know, city, county, the military flags, that kind of stuff that, you know. One thing I'm kind of curious, you know, I'm kind of new here, does the city actually have a flag policy in place? And if so, what does it say?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we do have a flag policy. Generally, the flag policy, though, references, you know, when flags should be lowered, raised, that sort of thing. It doesn't quite get into the discussion that you're having this evening. There is a policy, though, that we can distribute to all the council members, but it won't answer some of the questions that you're having today.
I would like to add that I've talked to staff, and we will be following all flag protocols and putting them in succession in order that the way they should be, and the flag will be put in place where it's appropriate. It will be temporary, it will be inside the lobby with the other flags, same size, same scale, not to exceed $120. I think that was the most expensive flag, so there's a scale of which we can purchase. And I understand where you're stuck, councilmember, but I just urge you that this is such an important issue with such a marginalized and oppressed group of people, that this is in good faith showing them that they belong here, that we respect them, that we see them, that we hear them, that we're here for them, and I just urge you to look deep, dig deep, and to take this plunge into future progress with me.
I get that, like I said, but I think the American flag clearly does that. And if it doesn't, then there's a problem. There's a problem if it doesn't, but again, it's just a perspective.
Thank you. Councilmember Lee.
First of all, I would like to commend many of you for having the courage to speak out, having the courage to be yourself, and having the courage to believe in you. For you to come here today and speak to us, to the city council, and to the resident of Garden Grove is a big, big thanks, and I really commend you for that. I want to say that for many, many years, I've been very supportive of you, and I have sympathy for you. You have been through much bullying, harassment, you name it. Some of you may remember me since the TED Parade, the Little Saigon TED Parade. Probably the first years or so, you were allowed to parade, and then the years after that, the organizer boycotted you from being participated in the parade. I was not the chairman of the Vietnamese community then, and I was not the head of the TED Parade Committee then, but I was seeing all of those things coming true. Now, after that second years, of that very first year that you was boycotted from participating in the TED Parade, for whatever reason, right? Different perspective, different ideas, different standards. You come out, you fought hard for it, and I remember listening to many of your radio programs, many of you was crying. It touched my heart as well. A year later, behind the scene, I lobby for you to come back to the TED Parade, and you agreed to some agreement, general agreement. And so since then, you have been paraded with us every single years for the last, I remember, if I remember correctly, for the last four years. It was very successful. You were allowed to fly the, you know, the color flags, your flag, your LGBT flag, every single year. You are allowed to have banners and carry your belief. And what I'm trying to say is, I believe that the community at large and the city of Garden Grove love you unconditionally, we want to embrace you, and that's the reason why last year, when Councilmember Kimberly Nguyen proposed that we issue a resolution to honor LGBT, the month of June as the LGBT month, you got the unanimous support from all of these seven members of the council. Okay, and maybe I was not here, but I remember, but you said, okay, maybe, because when I heard you mention earlier, thank you that you got unanimous support of it, and I wasn't here last year. I probably was in, was I was on vacation. But anyway, we love you.
Please, not a public ring, please, thank you.
Okay. Anyway, so, but this is not about, this is not about embracing LGBT or supporting LGBT. We, as a government body, need to answer to many different conflicting needs. The thing that worries us would be if we allow a non-governmental flag to be flown in the City Hall, we then would have to be fair and open up to many others' non-governmental flags to be flown in the, to be displayed in the city as well. And those that come first to my mind is the Vietnamese refugee flag, which is the yellow flag of Chris Kreis. And when I come of that, then the next thing that worried me is the communist, the Vietnamese communist red flag with the yellow star. And beyond that would be what about the other religions' flags? For example, the Buddhist, the Buddhism flags that might be flown during the month of May, because it is the time when we celebrate the birth of the Buddha, or the flag for the Catholics, the flag for Judaism, the flag for Muslims during the Ramadan month to honor them, and what about the flag of the other South Vietnamese military branch, such as the, they, those are the veteran groups that fought side by side with the US military as well. They brought, they fought the war together as brother and sister in arms, and so they also deserve to be honored, just like the US military being honored. So it's opened up a lot of things, and I understand that, you know, we need to take each situation case by case. However, you also need to be fair, right? So until I have a good grasp of what we are going to do, what is our policy for the flag is, which criteria should the council use to allow a flag to be displayed or not to be displayed, I, you know, it would be very difficult for me to support the agendas. Perhaps one of the possibilities would be to direct staff to give us the report in terms of what should, you know, flag policy should be before we can even adopt it. We have to have a framework first. We cannot just put the horse before the cart. We need to have the framework before we can, we can either consider or not consider it.
Thank you, John O'Neill.
Yeah, so, these are all these difficult situations, you're trying to represent the whole community, and there's no question that there's love and pride in everybody that lives here and participates here. The tough thing for me is that when these issues come up, they're honestly brought up because they want to bring people together and diversity and acceptance, but yet it divides us more than it put us together, in a lot of cases. So if we display this flag, you know, what is it going to do to the rest of the community? So things that are created to bring us together sometimes do the opposite. So I have a tough time setting a precedent where we do this one flag, you know, and opening it up. So I'm not really in support of it right now, but I would be open to how that would move forward. I do worry about other flags being displayed, or, you know, people coming every council meeting to have a flag every month or every day, or, you know. I'm satisfied with what we have right now, and I don't feel, I'm not in favor of changing a policy right now to add non-governmental flags.
Just very quick, right now, we don't have a policy to have non-government. It's going to be based on case by case. What is different between us and neighbor cities? We have five, four cities already passed, one city on the agenda tonight, so we don't know, Buena Park. But what is different between us, Costa Mesa, Fullerton, Anaheim, Santa Ana? None of them, I don't think they have any policy either. They put an agenda, they have the community come out and talk and express opinions, more participant come out and voice their care, love. So that's what, what is different between us and our neighbor city?
I just know that I've got a lot of emails and texts in opposition of this, so I'm just trying to represent my constituents.
Okay. I would like to state that I received one email that was pretty offensive in disagreement with this. We've had one speaker in disagreement with this, we've had nine speakers in support of this item. The majority of the people here are speaking in favor, and we've done this in the past where we've gone with the majority of the people here speaking on an item, so I don't see why we wouldn't do the same here. I would like to ask our city attorney, do we know if other, you may not know the answer to this, but you could probably bring it back to me next meeting, what policies other cities have in place for displaying the flag, and also what is our protocol for, if someone comes to request that we put up a flag, do we have to say yes, to be fair? What process would we take as a council? It's up to us, it's our decision. Yes, no, maybe so.
You don't necessarily have to answer, well, are you asking?
I'm asking, well, for the specific, the second question, yes. The first question about other cities, I'm sure that would take some research, but as far as our city council, how would we move forward if we put this on the agenda for the next meeting so that it coincides with us proclaiming the month of June as Pride Month? Do those together? How would we move forward with other requests in the future for other flags?
As to your first question, I don't know any specific city that has policies with respects to flags other than governmental flags, and most cities will follow the federal and state guidelines for the display of, you know, governmental flags, like the United States, the state flags, and county and city flags. So they, I'm not aware of any specific in other cities. As to the number two, which is, you know, whether we would be opening it up for one item on a case-by-case basis, maybe two or three items, I don't think that it would prevent the city council from, in the future, denying. But if a pattern is established that you're accepting of only one particular group or viewpoint and denying, you commence to deny other opposing viewpoints, then you will be subject to an equal protection challenge that could, you know, get the city injunction by a judge saying that you are discriminating against a particular group. So one or two cases may not, you know, raise an issue, but over time, if you do enough cases where a pattern is shown that you prefer one particular viewpoint or group over another, then you can set yourself up to an equal protection challenge. And both the federal and the state constitutions require the city to exercise equal protection and grant equal rights to everyone.
What about in cases, so, some of the comments that were made, like if we do this, we have to do the Confederate flag, with the Nazi seal on it, the Vietnamese communist flag. In those instances, because those flags have a very specific meaning, how would we approach that?
Again, it depends on the discussion, and it depends on the pattern. It It can give rise to equal protection challenges.
I'd also like to state that the state of California waves a flag, and that if you're in DC and you walk down the halls, several congressional members have the flag. I think, again, we have to think about the fact that this is, we, we were elected to make decisions. We will vote to make decisions on a case by case basis as they come to this council. This is a symbolic gesture to a community that, again, has been marginalized, oppressed, pushed out of the city. I think for this case, the case we are talking about today, not the one for tomorrow, not the one for next month or next year, the one for today, we should be making a decision based on that for today. We have a city attorney that can help us with our future problems, that's why we pay him big bucks for the one today. He says it's okay. He says it's okay. Our council member who's not able to be here has expressed it's okay. Look at our crowd, look at who's out there speaking. This is probably the most diverse group of people coming to speak at a council meeting since we did the district maps.
It's not open to public.
Couple questions have been, have been raised, and it, it is an interesting question. First of all, the question about how come Anaheim City have approved similar request, and all the city is considering it, Costa Mesa approve it, how come we cannot approve it? For me, I base my rationale and, and decision up on what I think is best for my city. I do not base my decision or my, my analysis on what other ci, purely on what other city is being doing. Blindly follow other city doesn't always mean we follow the right path. If we blindly follow them, we could go down the, you know, down the slope. To me, the, the core of the question should, should be, what is the policy for displaying a particular non-government flag? And once we have that criteria, how do we apply that criteria fair and just for every group that come and request them? Once we have a criteria established, then we can follow that criteria to make sure that, that this body of government decide based on what is, is right and fair and not based on a biased opinions. I may want to display the Vietnamese yellow flag, and I will strongly oppose the communist flag, but that's my personal bias. I may want to, want to display the LGBT flag because I want to show that I'm compassionate and I'm favoring them, but if other group come and, and have similar difficulty, should I then vote yes to, to display that, that flag, or should I not? It, it is very complicated. It cannot just be on, you know, we apply our feeling for one group differently than, than for another group. So I think for me to, and, and I'm willing to support the display of LGBT flag. If we have a very well and fair criteria, so that we can establish, and based on that criteria, we can then vote yes or vote no objectively, not, not subjectively. That's what I'm saying. So, so if you ask me to, to vote yes on this today, it's, it's difficult for me.
I would just like to add that the city of Santa Ana approved to, to fly the Pride flag three years ago, and as I am aware, I don't think that they've had any legal issues or any other issues with other flags. With that being said, I would like to amend my motion to, to have this agendized for the next meeting, so that the Pride flag is put into city hall with the other flags. But I would like to add that if we could potentially have some sort of flag policy that would make my council colleagues feel more comfortable, I'm open to that as well. So we could do that in full swing. I know it's a rushed request, and I apologize for that, but if it's going to help move this along, then I would amend my motion to include that, so that they feel more comfortable.
Can you recap that? I'm, I'm not sure if I understand that clearly.
This motion with an included request for staff to make a flag policy, so that we can have criteria to vote in the future.
Thank you. I'll second that, and I want to just clarify for the audience, and maybe for us as well, just the nature of this item. So when a council member, in this case, Councilmember Kim Nguyen brings forth a matter under matters for consideration, it's, this is not an actionable item tonight, right? So the, the vote tonight does not say yes or no to a flag. The vote tonight is to agendize it as an actionable item at the next council. That's just how it works. You can't go straight from A to Z. If council member says, we want to, I want to bring forward this great new thing, whatever it may be, it's, you bring it up and you need council support to agendize it as a voting item. So that's where we're at tonight. So I want to try and fast forward and say, we've got a motion, we've got a second, and this is to agendize this for a more formal discussion at, at our next council meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce a substitute motion. I'd like to introduce this, I want to go beyond putting the flag in the thing. I would like a proclamation of support, declaring, not only declaring, but it's in support of June being, but the two groups, and correct me, I, I only heard of two groups, Viet Rise and Viet Rainbow. Is there another group that didn't make themselves known? I, I would like to, you know, have proclamation of support drafted for them in support of the June as the, the month, I'm sorry, I gotta get, as the LGBT.
Month.
Q, yeah, month. Also, I would like the substitute motion to also carry the flag provision that we devise an actual flag policy, city flag policy to be presented.
I would second it.
Oh wait, you want to not have the flag in the lobby, but want to proclaim the month, even though that's already on the agenda for next, I already, we've already done that, it's an annual.
You've already put it on the agenda?
Yes. It's an annual, it's an annual reoccurrence now because it was approved last meeting.
I wasn't aware of that.
So, every year moving forward from last year, June will come to the agenda to be proclaimed as Pride Month. This motion is to have the flag placed inside city hall's lobby.
But do we specifically name these groups that came to our council meeting as far as the proclamation?
No, we just proclaim it, they're, they're not requesting that we proclaim it, we've already done that, and so the proclamation is already written.
Isn't it better if we bring them in and give them a proclamation and celebrate them as a group?
Testing to modify, are you saying?
Yeah.
So I want to reiterate that that motion doesn't really count because it already happened, and I just want to reiterate that my amendment is to put on the agenda on the May 28th meeting to have the flag put inside city hall's lobby, and I asked for amendment to include that we create a policy for the flag criteria if future requests come into our council.
So if I understand you correctly, you want, you amend your motion to, to say that you would like us to vote, to agendize it. We vote now to agendize it, two things. First, to have the LGBT flag being, being displayed in, in the lobby, and we will vote for that next week. In addition to that, you also would like staff, we vote today to allow staff to draft a flag policy, so that we can vote on it at the next council meeting.
My amended polit, or my second, I'm sorry, substitute polit, motion also had that part about the flag policy in it. So I don't know, where do we go from here? Because that received a second as well.
I, I.
So, so in terms of procedure, you have to vote first on the substitute motion.
Yeah.
Can I, can I reiterate my, my substitute motion, then, to just include the bringing of a policy, flag policy, and, or do we have to?
That's an amendment, and it, it, it's valid only if your second agrees to that amendment. Otherwise.
Are you good with that, of just establishing a flag policy?
I, I agree to that, I agree to that. So let me, let me clarify. So I agree to the alternate motion that we will create first, the flag policy. Once we adopt a flag policy, then we would consider this flag, that flag, other flags.
But that's not what we're, we're voting on, we're voting to adopt.
Just to adopt the flag policy. And, but, but before we vote, I would like to ask staff, is two weeks enough for, for staff to put together a comprehensive flag policy? Keep in mind that we have a lot of group that have a stake, you know, an interest, you know, at, at, at this policy. I, I have a question for.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and to Councilman Bowie, so what I understand the request to be is that we can agendize, what Councilmember Nguyen has indicated in her motion is that we agendize her original request to fly, to, to display the flag in the lobby, but also bring to the council, that's, that would be, that would be agendized, but that to also bring to the council at the next meeting, a flag policy that would give council criteria for making future decisions, should other groups want to come forward and ask for other flags to be flown.
No, that's not, that's not the alternate motion.
The alternate motion is simply a flag policy, and then we'll vote on Councilman Nguyen's motion after, according to Omar.
I, I, I do not feel, I as a council member, I do not feel comfortable in voting for something that we have not sure that we, we, we have established yet. So I would like to second Councilman Prettingham's alternate motion that only establish the flag policy first, before we do anything else.
I just want to chime in and say, why would we establish a flag policy if we're not going to fly a flag? So, but secondly, but secondly, could we not put it on the agenda so that the flag policy is first, and then fly, putting the LGBT flag in the lobby after that vote is taken? So like ordering it, policy first, and then LGBT flag? So that that is approved first, and then the flag would go after that?
Similarly, to remember, in 2017 and the early 2018, I had request a Black April Memorial Monument to be, you know, to be built and placed in the Garden Grove Park. And the council decided that we first need to establish a statue policy for the park before we can consider it. Because we need to have guidance, guideline for us to, to, to decide, you know, how the statue will, will be adopted in the, in, in, in the city park. Similarly, we need to have a flag policy, so that we know, based on that flag policy, we then can, staff can, you know, come up with a, with the analysis and the, and the suggest for displaying one particular group flag to another particular group flags. And, and I'm very concerned because we are opening up something that might, might subject to a lot of conflicting requests. For example, right now in Orange County, there are a lot of Vietnamese refugee who are strictly having nationalist view, who are very strongly anti-communist. And yet, there are also Vietnamese who have communist view. There may be, they may come to our city and argue, "Councilman Bowie, you advocate for displaying the Vietnamese yellow flag of three star, I mean, the three stripes during the Black April Month." I want to display the Vietnamese communist flag because I believe in the communist view. What do I do? If I, if I deny them, the city may be subject to potential lawsuit, and the lawyer, you know, our city attorney have confirmed that. If we, if people can establish that we are biased on certain, certain political view or religious view, we are asking ourselves for trouble. So, so we have to do our diligence to, to make sure that we do not put our city at risk. Also, we want to embrace everyone, we want to bring the community together. In social issue, we, sometime we are never seeing things the same. And so I support LGBT. You have seen it during the Ted parade, every years of last year, I invite you to, to parade in the Ted parade. Hmm?
Big swat last, at the very end of the parade.
So, so, but there might be, there might be other who, who have issue with this. And so we, as a, as a government city, we need to make sure that we are in neutral. We, we, you know, if we, if we allow this, then what if the Buddhists want to display their, their Buddhism flags, their religious flags during the, the month that we separate Buddha? What if the, the Jewish people want to display, display the flag during their, their religious month? And so, and so the, the Muslim, and so on, and so on. So it, it, I think, I think we need to, to take time to study the flag policy carefully, adopt one before we, before we can consider other requests.
I just want to clarify that our city attorney said that a pattern needed to be established first, before that we would be subject to litigation over this matter, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Today's item is LGBT, this is not a religion, this is not a political framework for communism or not, this is about protecting people. This is the issue at hand today, and I've already amended my motion to include a flag policy to accommodate your concerns. Put it first before the other item, we can do it together in one day and get it done, while still showing support to a huge group, not just in Garden Grove, in Orange County, that come through our city every day to participate by shopping, spending time, and doing all other things here. So I don't see why this is a problem.
Hey, clarification. We had a motion and a second originally, and then we had a substitute motion and a second. Is the maker and the secondary of the substitute motion still stuck on?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Then the substitute motion has to get acted upon first, and the substitute motion?
To adopt a flag, yeah, to adopt a flag policy.
Just a flag policy?
Flag policy only, that's it. Nothing else added.
We have a substitute motion and a second, please call the vote.
While the motion failed, we had three yes votes and three no votes, with Councilmember Kim Nguyen, Mayor Jones, and Tu Hau Nguyen voting no.
Okay, so that reverts back to the original motion, and to clarify, I believe what you motioned was that to bring forth a flag policy for consideration, and secondarily, the consideration of original action to, to put a flag. Any more discussion on that item?
No.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, please call the vote.
Motion received. That motion also failed, with Councilmember Bowie, Councilmember Brightman, Bridgum, and Councilmember O'Neill voting no.
What do we do?
Well, I mean, you can, you can consider alternate motions, or the, the item dies for lack of a majority vote.
Is there anything here that we could agree upon to agendize this for a formal discussion at the next meeting?
The nice thing is, if we actually had a flag policy in place, a lot of this could be resolved for next year. But, you know, and so looking forward, you know, having that in place already could be a positive thing.
But it would, but it would take away the possibility of it happening this year.
But that vote's already happened.
Or half of this year, half of this month, June. Yes, we can. Yes, we can.
And with that, I will insist it's it's not a public discussion where we have to stick to protocol. But but I'm still sort of searching for an opportunity to keep this discussion alive with respect to my colleague, Councilmember Kim Nguyen, who brought this forward and is impassioned about seeing this through. So.
I just think that if we're not going to vote to put the flag in the lobby, then why are we, the point of the policy is, let me, let me sit on my words for a second. The only reason why a flag policy is being put in place or being asked to put in place is because you're uncomfortable voting with putting the LGBT flag in the lobby. So I don't understand what the issue would be is pushing forward a policy and then voting to do the LGBT flag in the lobby. Regardless, it's going to be, it could be agendized, and you can vote yes or you can vote no, however you choose at the next meeting. I'm simply asking for it to be agendized so that we can vote on it.
I want to say that a lot of this could have been avoided, because I didn't know of this even being on the agenda until Thursday night. And then I have people in the public seeing it and calling me and emailing. If we would have prepared for this a few months ago and been aware of what's coming up, I mean, it really puts me in a bind for my constituency when I'm voting on something this quick without a policy. And really, you say that there is no protocol. Well, there is a protocol. We've had the same government flags in place for 60 years, and now we're changing it. So in my opinion, we're changing policy. So just put yourself in my position. I've got to represent everybody. And the problem I have again is, these things that are meant to bring us together, ultimately, what's happening right now is it's dividing us again. And I hate it. I hate it, I hate it, I hate it, because we're not, we're not that city. We were, is there anything else we can do tonight to, to do something else? Or obviously, the proclamation is already going to happen. It's already scheduled to happen in June, correct? So that's happening, and I'm glad that's happening. But now placing the flag in, we got four days' notice. That's why I'm having difficulty with it. So I just wanted.
I didn't request a flag policy to be in place, because I didn't anticipate this to be such a huge issue. I, from my recollection, no other city has any different flag policy than ours, and there's still five cities that have put this up and passed it. But I am, I am meeting you halfway by requesting a flag policy to put in place before this vote for the LGBT flag takes place. So you guys are not meeting me halfway to make this happen. You're using empty words to say that if a flag policy comes, then two weeks out of the month of June, we will be able to have an LGBT flag. It's a month.
But you just voted no on that. You just voted no on that. We, that was the very first thing we voted on, and you voted no.
I voted no to have just simply the flag policy, because I'm requesting that the LGBT flag.
But you're saying we need the flag policy, and now you're saying the opposite. So which one is it? You voted no on that.
I don't think we need one. I think that on a case-by-case basis, we can vote at our discretion with the guidance of our attorney on how to approve for future requests. I brought you case studies, Santa Ana as an example, that in the last three years that they have approved to have the flag, they have had no issues. I don't think that they're being sued for flags. Other cities have done this. So I didn't think we needed one. But in order to have everyone on board, I amended my motion to include that to make you feel better.
With, with, with all due respect, Kim, like I mentioned, I truly willing to consider the LGBT flag being displayed once we have a flag policy. That flag policy need to be setting the criteria and the policy that we then can apply to other groups that request non-government flag being displayed. I cannot, you're asking me to, okay, well, then just just put this on the agenda, and then we will adopt the the resolution, I mean, the the flag policy, and and then we also vote on the LGBT. It's just not, not following the right government procedural. So I have much difficult, and and to the LGBT groups, if we have a flag policy that we have criteria, then that will be, that at least set the motion moving forward, that at least, once we establish the frameworks, if your request for displaying the flag fit within that framework, it will be gaining more support. So right now, if we get stuck with not establishing the flag policy, we're not getting anywhere.
Well, honestly, the way I'm looking at it now, I mean, just from hearing and how we're split up, honestly, what we need to do is get the policy established, so everybody will be comfortable next year. Because right now, if we leave it as is, next year, we're going to probably be in a similar boat, all right? So why don't we get an actual flag policy developed by the city? Because it doesn't look like this is going to happen for this year. I mean, I'm sorry, but I just don't see it happening, just from hearing what we're doing. But if we get a flag policy in place, and then maybe Councilman Bowie, Councilman O'Neill, myself, will be a little more a thing. Again, I I truly believe the American flag encompasses all nationalities, creeds, religious, beliefs, everything. But that's my perspective. And again, that's coming from a military veteran and this and that, so. And I get some people don't think that. But, you know, I think a lot of people do think that. And so if we had a flag policy, at least we'd have something to go for for the next year, so we're not in the same boat next year. And that's kind of where I'm looking. I mean, at least we can get that going, and at least get that rolling.
I just want to reiterate and establish that this is a federally protected class. This is not about political views. This is not about anything other than a federally protected class that we are trying to make a good faith gesture towards. And I am abiding by your request and meeting you halfway by saying, let's do a flag policy first, vote yes or no next week, or in two weeks, and then, then vote.
Or answer.
Per my request, because I am requesting it, no one in the public has asked me to put this on the agenda. It was just me, myself, and I thinking it would be a great thing to do, then vote for that. And you can vote yes or no. I'm asking for it to be formalized and put on the agenda in two weeks for further discussion. I'm meeting you halfway by asking that we get a flag policy put in place. Federally protected class.
In person, I just think everybody is asking that we actually get a policy, a comprehensive policy, that we've actually had discussion, and a real policy, not just something we rushed in two weeks to do, and then just so we can make a vote. You know, I, that's where I'm thinking that's where we're looking at. And so, again, I get, you say you're meeting us halfway, but the halfway, we voted on that, and you voted no. I mean, we want to.
Because it excluded the main point. I have all faith in our highly paid staff to put something together that we can discuss on on our briefing and then at the meeting. And you can choose to not vote for the flag policy as well. And then you can choose to not vote to have the LGBT flag in the lobby.
But there might be some things that you would like heard on that. There might, you know, Mayor Jones might want some things. We might have, it might take more than two weeks, is what I'm trying to say.
It might or not. But but is there any?
So for me, for me, for me, let's just say this doesn't go anywhere tonight. I will then come back to the council and ask for a flag policy in the near future, so that we have something. If other group come and ask, and if LGBT come and ask for a flag, at least we have a framework, and they know what that flag policy is. If they think they fit within that framework, then they will have a very, very strong possibility that it will be, it will be agreed on by the by the council, because it it fits the framework for the flag policy.
Getting public comments on that new policy.
Yeah. But for me, for me, for me to have a reasonable flag policy, we need to include a lot of people. We need to include the the public's, you know, the resident input into it. And then I think two weeks is very short for this kind of complex issue.
We have gone over 60 years without this being a problem.
Because we only display the government flags, nothing else.
Past case study that I said, Santa Ana, three years strong, they don't have any issues coming up. We wouldn't be putting this on there had I not made this request, so I'm asking that you meet me halfway and do both. We will have a flag policy, and then we will put the LGBT flag in the lobby. Up to your discretion to vote yes or no, but I'm asking for it to be formally formally agendized, because this is just a discussion item.
Possible for her to kind of remake the same motion after more discussion?
It's really a motion for reconsideration, but again, if there's no second, it just doesn't go on the table.
We get one in two weeks, and we agree with it, we vote for it, and then we get the LGBT flag as well. All said and done.
I just don't see that you can, I mean, honestly, you know how things work, and there's no way we're going to get the public meetings together, the agree on a framework, get public comments, get all the people, all the stakeholders together. That's just not going to happen in two weeks. I think everyone here knows that.
We've made bigger decisions with bigger policy changes that required less time to do so. Omar, what would be the process to create a flag policy and its approval for the city council? In regards to public comment, public consideration, how would that, how would that look? Can we do it in two weeks?
I'm not sure you can do it in two weeks. I did a quick Google search, and there are other cities that do have flag policies. And so, you know, if you were to direct me, if agendize it for the next meeting, I would bring back, you know, samples of those policies for you to consider, pick and choose, you know, the policy that you want to actually adopt, and maybe even have the framework for you to adopt it at that meeting. But, you know, it's, it's a policy, so it's got to be your policy. In many circumstances, when you're looking at policies like this, you would create a NHA committee to go study it, to bring back, you know, a proposal.
Unity meetings, that's involved.
It's not like we're talking about regulation. We're talking really about a policy on the use of your building, government building.
Would we require a public hearing for that, public consideration? How long did it take for when Councilmember Bowie asked us to create a policy to not have the communist Viet flag flown on city property? How long did that take? Because I remember you drafted language for that last year.
No, we did not, we did not prohibit communist flag. We cannot. We only discourage that, we're not welcoming it. We cannot.
So how long did it take for us to put that we discourage the flying of that flag?
So I can tell you, in that instance, the cities of Westminster, San Jose had already adopted a resolution proclaiming, you know, their position. And all that we did is bring back the same resolution to the city council in Garden Grove, which which the city adopted.
You're saying you're going to do the same thing. You're going to take other cities' policies, share it.
It's a little different, because Westminster, San Jose had actually adopted the very same policy. So I didn't have to pick and choose and recommend.
See, this is not something I would make a recommendation.
Let me share with you one thing that the Vietnamese are very, very wary about. And that is, there is a group in San Jose is threatening to sue the city of San Jose for allowing the Vietnamese yellow flag being fly in their flagpole. And they are suing, if you allow that, then why not allowing the Vietnamese communist flag also being being flown up there? So, you know, it's something that we have to be very, very careful not not to, you know, hurry and 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 create a major litigation risk for us. And that's why I'm, I'm asking for a general flag policy that is, so that we can apply it fair and just for everyone who come and ask if it fit the criteria, then we allow it. If it doesn't fit the criteria, then we don't. But if we craft such a criteria, we need to make sure that we do not create a legal issue for us.
Could we possibly go back to the substitute motion to agendize just the flag policy for next meeting? And if we don't get there, we don't get there, we can continue it, we can whatever it, but...
Yeah, I think that would be very good, because at least it create a pathway for possible LGBT flag being being flown in the in the city hall in the near future. If not in June, maybe in July or in June of next year.
But it's supposed to be for June, not for July, for June.
June and June of next year. Because you bring it up at the last minute, it gives us very little time to react.
I'm bringing it with a month's notice. So again, this is a federally protected group of people. This is not a country. This is not an organization. This is a federally protected class. We, I'm still saying, create the flag policy, and however long that it takes to get there, we'll make it prime and perfect, so that you guys don't have any issues with it moving forward. But for this particular instance, I think that we can do both at the next meeting. And if you have issues with the flag policy at the next meeting, we will revise it, we'll massage it, we'll make it however you guys want, that's fair for everyone. But I don't see the harm in putting both of those items at the next meeting. And again, you can vote no.
Are we going to possibly get a second on going after getting a flag policy, so we don't run into this? That I'm hearing, there might be.
If I make the alternate motion again, I will second it again.
Well, no, but I think Omar said, it sounds like there might be some more support for that at this point. So should I make the motion again?
I won't vote for a flag policy unless we're also including approving the LGBT flag in the lobby, because this would not be an issue had I not requested that. So it would be pointless, because in this last 60 years, no one has made that request but me. So this would not be a problem had I not brought it up.
Can I say something?
Comp.
So I guess.
Wait, wait, can I say something first? We're going to go back and forth until midnight. We're going nowhere.
It's fun for a new.
The problem is, right now is, wait, hold on. Right now, Councilwoman Kim, just want to agendize, so we can vote yes or no next, next council meeting. You can vote no again, and might be, might not pass, okay? It's about agendize for the next meeting. We not vote yes to be displaced, the LGBT flag right now. We just vote to agendize at the same time with the motion is to have the flag policy.
It seemed to me that we will, we does not go anywhere with this, with this, with the discussion. We had three vote, no on one side, and no on the other side.
I know exactly what it takes to develop a comprehensive policy. There's, there's a rush, get, throw it together type of thing, and there's doing a comprehensive, actually, good policy. And and two weeks is going to be tight, and I think everyone here knows that. With that being said, at least we could resolve this issue for next year. We're in a position to do that today. It's probably not going to come up again until next year, and it's going to take time to do this. So why don't we get that ball rolling? That makes a lot more sense to me.
Why couldn't we in good faith, put both on the agenda for the next meeting and continue to work on a flag policy?
Because we know that that's not going to happen, and we know that we don't have the.
If we had a comprehensive flag policy, would you be voting to allow for the LGBT flag to be in the lobby?
We don't know yet, because we don't have guidance on where our policy is going to be.
I'm seeing like a maybe. So why don't we do that? You can decide at the next meeting.
Maybe the policy would be only to allow government flags.
I would like to request the mayor to make the decision, because it seem like we're going nowhere. The three of us doesn't change, and the three of you doesn't change. So there's no point to continue the discussion.
There's, there's a three-three stalemate here in terms of how to proceed, in terms of what to agendize on this thing next week. So I've, I've gathered that Kim's motion to agendize both is not going to happen next week, because the three that are opposed to that are, well, I mean, there was a substitute, there was the original, there's discussion, things could change, people could be swayed. But I'm gathering, everybody's digging their heels, and that's not happening here. So, so I would say, your original motion is not happening in two weeks. We're at a stalemate. You can count to three and three. Do we want to agendize just the flag policy for next meeting only, or not? No? Okay. Then the substitute motion failed, the original motion failed, the item is over.
Mayor on matters, I have, if the mayor said we're moving on, I do have one item to report back to you on pertaining to a different item that was raised at the prior council meeting, aggressive solicitation regulations. council meeting, aggressive solicitation regulations. We've done some preliminary research and it is possible for my office to prepare an ordinance for the council to consider, so it would be appropriate for the council to consider a motion to agendize it for a future meeting for action.
Can you, can you-
Yeah, repeat that again.
Repeat that again one more time.
Okay, so at the last council meeting, councilmember Bridgum asked or directed us to work on a solicitation ordinance, and I indicated that I would look into it really quickly. And it is possible, there are, there are solicitation ordinances that have been upheld by the courts, mainly the city of Los Angeles, and we can bring back a similar ordinance to the city council. But I do need action by the council to agendize it for action at a future meeting, and I would request that it be agendized in four weeks. I don't think I can have an actual ordinance by the next meeting.
I'll make that motion if possible, but I'll, I'll give you as much time as you need. I mean, if you need more than, I don't wanna limit you. I mean, if you need more time than-
Second meeting in May should be plenty of time.
Oh.
I'll, I'll make that motion then.
I have a question, and if I may.
Please.
Mayor, council colleagues and city manager, I, since October of 2018, during the campaign, I work a lot of mobile home parks. And a lot of the tenants there are very concerned about, you know, rent that being, that going up the roof. I promised them that, please allow us, because right now we are in the middle of the campaign. Everyone is busy, it's difficult for us, for me, to deal with it. Now that, you know, we, we catch up, I remember that my promise to them. If I would like to have staff to report to me how many, I think there are roughly about fifteen mobile home parks in Garden Grove and about the same in the city of Westminster. But I do not know how many, you know, mobile home there are. And I also do not know the breakdown of their rent, you know, what is the low and what's the high.
Commissioner Bowie?
If, if-
There was a motion on the floor about the aggressive panhandling. I thought you were gonna second it, but it looks like you're going on a different topic.
Oh, I see, I didn't, I didn't realize that because the mayor asking me to, to bring up my, my, my issue.
Yeah, we discussed a couple weeks ago about the aggressive panhandlers and we had tasked Omar with looking into it. He's saying that there's a possibility that we can have an ordinance drafted.
My, my apologies, that's been some buzz.
But he needs a motion.
I second it.
Thank you, Fat.
So should we call for the vote?
Mayor has to do that.
Call to vote.
Agendize it for action in second meeting in May.
Motion received, six yes votes.
So my, my, my question is, I'd like to get more information about it, and I would like to talk to Mr. Stiles. So, so back to the mobile home park issue, it's become a very crisis, urgent issue for, for the tenants who ran mobile home park. A lot of them are seniors elderly with very, very limited income. Many of them survive on only about sixteen hundred dollar a month. So my, my question is, I need to talk to the mobile homeowner and mobile homeowner association. I need to talk to the, the tenants to understand the issue. And this is, is a lot of involving, involve a lot of works. Can I ask staff to help us organizing a meeting? And if so, do I need to bring it up to the city council for a vote in order to direct staff to, to work with us?
I'll, I'll second that if, if it needs a second. We, we do have a population of seniors, low-income people, and they are getting priced out of their homes. And they're losing these mobile homes to a point where they can't even sell them because it costs too much to move them, and they get forced just abandoning them and letting these landlords take control of them and reselling them. So I, I think it's something we should look into. I, I don't know necessarily that we need to go down a rent control application. I don't think that's, you know, but we should hear from all parties and get educated on it at least, and see if there's anything that we can do to help the problem.
That's not what I meant of, of trying to, to handle it because I know it's very difficult to handle, to deal with it, to, to resolve it. But I know my constituents are facing a huge problem, and they are asking us for help. We need to be prepared. We need to be understand, we need to understand the issue from the tenant perspective and also from the, from the mobile home park owner perspective. And it, it's complex, so it's, it's something that beyond my comprehension at this point. Unless we talk to a lot more tenant and a lot more mobile home park owner to understand what the issue are. We cannot have a solution until we, we understand what the issue are at that place. And that's what I'm trying to, to get to here, to understand the issue first.
Yeah, I would, I'd strongly support that because I know we have congressional people looking at it, we've got state senators and assembly people looking at it as a regional issue, but it would be great to get all, because I think probably every one of our districts has one or two mobile home parks in it. It'd be good to get, yeah, I know, and it'd be good to get input from just specifically Garden Grove. We can have a little town hall or a special meeting for-
But we, we should do separate meetings, have one meeting with the tenants, one meeting with the landlords or the owners, so we can get the different perspectives.
I, I think that's up to us, but before, we can direct staff to spend time on it.
But we have to vote on that, right?
We need to vote to allow them to work on it.
Right, yeah.
So we have a motion.
I second it.
And, and the second.
And councilman, just so I make sure I understand the request, so you're interested in staff trying to work with council to set up two separate meetings? One meeting with mobile homeowners and a second meeting with mobile home residents?
Yes.
That are, whether they be owners of mobile homes or renters?
Correct.
Right.
I think, I think they all rent.
People who stay there. I believe it would be mobile homeowners and possibly the association maybe at the same time, and then you'd have the, the owners of the mobile home parks.
Yeah.
Separate, separately, yeah.
The property owners.
Property owners. Because what's happening is, these properties are changing hands, and obviously for development reasons, whether they would force somebody out, try to, you know, the property value goes up, property tax changes, people are forced out because the landlord increases the rent so high, maybe four, five, seven hundred dollars in one, one increase, and these people on fixed incomes cannot handle it. So it's becoming a big issue. So we need to talk about it, we need everybody to talk about it. So whatever that looks like, I think just the direction here would be to-
It would probably be two separate meetings.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, we've got a motion and a second, please call the vote.
And the second and last issue?
Wait.
Not quite done.
We have a motion and a second, right?
Right.
We did. Call the vote before we get onto any other issues in the world. You don't have a thing on?
I already voted.
Oh, gotcha, sorry.
Sorry.
Motion received, six yes votes.
Okay, second and last issue. With recent issue involving nepotism at a nearby city, I got a lot of phone call from constituent, and I, I even posted one on our resident, friend and resident of Garden Grove. And a lot of our constituent asked about, you know, where are we with our own nepotism policy? Last Friday, I talked to Omar, and I asked Omar about, about the nepotism policy that we voted on in 2014. And Omar, you know, briefly recapped that for, for me, and I was so surprised that it only applied to employee. It does not apply to the commission. Most of us, if I remember, go back to the time that I can remember, we don't appoint our wife or son or father to, you know, various commission. We don't do that, we just don't do that. The only time that I remember was the husband of councilmember Dinah Nguyen was appointed to planning commission, and it was legal at the time. So I think in the spirit of nepotism that we, policy that we established in 2014, I was under the impression that it will apply across not only employee, but also to the commission, to various commission. So I would like to ask for my colleague's support to agendize it next week, that we consider to vote on extending the nepotism policy to the commission so that we do not permit, you know, councilmember appointing, or the council appointing member of the direct family to, to the various commission. Meaning I cannot appoint my wife or, or my colleague cannot appoint my wife to, to the various commission. I think we have enough applicant and enough people with experience and wisdom to, to serve. We don't need, we do not need that.
That's tough, but I'll give you a second.
Okay, the, the, we do have a nepotism policy that does not direct reports between the manager and the supporting it, but that only extend to, to the employee. I would like to consider extending that nepotism policy to also apply to, between the, the, the city council and the commission that we appoint.
Basically, our relatives can't work for free.
Relative.
And would that include, would that include a, an employee, a staff employee also? I would assume a relative, immediate relative, not only council, but?
We, we are, we already, no.
You're saying just council?
Just council.
Okay.
Just council, not, not, not member of, not member of the employee.
Yeah, let's say there's somebody in public service and they live in Garden Grove and their son or daughter wants to be on a commission, it wouldn't have a-
That, that does not apply to them.
Okay, just wanted to clarify. Call the vote.
Motion received, six yes votes.
Thank you. Any other matters from councilmembers? Don't fill the-
I just have an event to share. In an effort to build bridges within the Latino, Muslim and Vietnamese communities, there will be an event called Taco Trucks at every mosque on Friday, May 24th at 7:00 PM at the Islamic Society of Orange County located in Garden Grove. They will be giving free halal tacos and one bowl of pho. So I would like to just invite the community to participate in this event and build bridges between communities.
Thank you. Any other matters, any other comments?
Well, I was gonna say, real quick, today we celebrated our Garden Grove graduates from college, bachelor's degrees, master's degrees, JDs, it was very exciting. You know, please get that word out to register, especially if you're gonna graduate next year for next year's event, come in and get that free meal. Also, I, just a word of advice, please, 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 talk to your children about putting the phone down when they're walking in public. Today I was coming back from a training right at Valley View in Lamson, and this kid looking at the phone darted out right in front of me. I slammed on my brakes, I literally missed him by less than six inches, and just gave me a heart attack, you know? And sitting there trying to catch a Pokemon or whatever they were trying to do, I don't know. But you know what? When you're out in public walking, put the phone away, your life isn't worth it, okay? You know, with that being said, you know, pedestrians do have the right of way, but I think people confuse right of way with immortality. And, you know, a lot of drivers, they have slow reflexes, they're, might be intoxicated, there might be, you know, you might not survive that encounter, so, you know, please, please talk to your kids about that.
We won't meet again until after the strawberry festival and Memorial Day weekend, so I just wanted to invite everybody out to come and enjoy the festivities of the strawberry festival, the parade, the cake cutting and the rides, and then of course Memorial Day, observance of Memorial Day. So we'll see you after Memorial Day. Quick reminder, we still have four closed session items after this. Any other comments?
Yes, we would like to see more people participate in 5K stump this year as well. So, and at the same time, just wanna say thank you to all the, everyone attending the city council today, and all the young people who voiced their opinions, especially the students right there. This is how the process work, very democratic. We continue to encourage every one of you to participate in city council, speak up, speak out, and this help us to do our job better. All right, thanks.
City manager Scott Stiles.
Mr. Mayor, just two quick items. I'm happy to report our community and economic development department is excited that, that they, along with their city planning team, in conjunction with KOA and the Garden Grove Unified School District, have received an American Planning Association Award of Excellence recognition for their safe routes to school master plan that they worked on. They'll be getting recognized in a ceremony in orange on May 30th, and so exciting for them. And then the only other thing, I'll be sending you some photos of the Garden Grove Park Recreation Center, the new gym floor that we had some discussion about, and underlying waterproofing has all been in store, the floor looks great. So I'll send you some photographs this week that, that display it, so it looks really good. That's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Our council, do we have need for closed session?
Yes, we do have four closed session items, and I don't have any additional information to add pertaining to them.
We will adjourn to closed session.